Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, May 2nd, 2022 Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board Agenda. I see all Planning Board members are here, so we have a quorum and are ready to begin the meeting. I believe the agenda, well, we're going to be moving things around a little bit, but the agenda, all the items remain as they were originally posted. Jim will explain in a minute how we're going to shift some things around, but I think you'll find it easier on the applicants. You've all received the meeting notes from Jim. Are there any comments, questions, corrections?
Barring none, I move that we approve them.
Thank you, Edna. Could I have a second, please?
Second, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. You did not receive the April 18th minutes. We will review them and approve them at our next meeting. And I don't have any correspondence or announcements to share. Does anyone else? Okay, hearing none, Jim, I'll turn it over to you, and you can explain how we want to proceed this evening.
Everyone, so this evening, we had two seeker review, part two reviews and documents we're going to run through. We are actually only going to do the Grassmere House review this evening. With Red Wing, we did not have all the materials we needed completed in order to be able to do that. But given the number of public hearings we have and the amount of time, we do believe the seeker review will take. What we're going to do is I'm going to open up the meeting now, just providing an overview of what we're going to do for the seeker review. Then around 6:15 or about the time that I'm done, we will then get into the public hearings so that we can get those of you that are on the call for the public hearings through your public hearing. And off, and then at the end of the meeting, when all the public hearings are done, we're going to come back to actually doing the part two at the end of the meeting. So that way, those of you on the call for the public hearings can can be on your way unless you'd like to listen in. So with that, I would just like to kind of provide maybe just like a five to nine-minute review here to get us 6:15. But also let everyone know kind of what it is we're doing tonight. Just an overview of what we do need to do this evening for the Grassmere House Part Two Seeker Review. All the Planning Board members received or should have received an email from me today with the forms that we'll be going through tonight. And you've had those in your possession for a while, but just you have them at the top of your email. And I know John emailed you as well with a link to some information. So with that, I'll kick it off, and then, you know, John, if you'd like to have anything, if you have anything to say, when I'm done with this, please, by all means, let me know. And then we'll get into the public hearings in a minute. So this evening for the Grassmere House, we're going to be looking at the Part Two Impact Assessment. DEC says that lead agencies, you know, the purpose of this, and you are the lead agency is the planning board, is to use the information from the Part One document. And the Part One document is in a different file. Give me one second here. Okay, so I have to share screens here. The Part One document was a document that was put together by the applicant, by Grassmere House, essentially explaining
Exactly.
what they believe to be the case for all the environmental elements related to everything we have for seeker. And they did fill out and provide us an updated version of this just a couple of weeks ago that has more information than we had originally. So utilizing this document, the Part One, later this evening, we are going to go through Part Two. And yes, that means we are going to talk through every single one of these lines under every single category that is on the form. So we're going to be discussing impact on land, impact on geological features, impact on surface water, impact on groundwater, the impact on flooding, the impact on air, impact on plants and animals, impact on agricultural resources, impact on aesthetic resources, impact on historic and archaeological resources, impact on open space and recreation, critical environmental areas, energy, noise, odor, and light, and impact on human health. Oops, sorry. Consistency with the community plans and consistency with community character. Each of these lines, as you see, have relevant Part One questions, you know, E3E, E3F, E3G, those relate back to the Part One form that was submitted. So if you haven't printed out or you haven't, you know, available, you can take a look at that as we go through this. I think my plan is to put the actual form up online, and as we go through, I'll check the boxes. But I could certainly read off the the material that's been submitted to us for the purposes of going through this in a little bit. So with that.
I think, Jim, the only thing I would add is just to say that what is being examined here is the or just the differences between the last iteration of the plan and the new site plan that's been submitted.
Okay. Thank you, John. The the forms that we're using and the questions included in Part Two are designed to help you, the reviewing agency, the planning board, identify what, if any, impacts may occur as a result of the project, or as John just said, resulting in this project versus the the former project. It's also to use to decide whether those impacts would have no impact, small impact, moderate, or large impact. With that, I did want to go through really quickly kind of what that means. When we're talking, and this again is all from the New York State DEC, we're utilizing their definitions and how they look at things. When we're talking about something in scale, we're talking about both the size and intensity of the project. If we're talking about the context, we're talking about the conditions on the project site as it relates to adjacent parcels, the neighborhood, or the community as a whole. If we're talking about measuring impacts, we're talking about its magnitude. That depends on the overall size, setting, and severity. And when it comes to impacts, again, we'll be filling out two boxes as I hopefully see on the screen. I still have it up. We're either looking at no or small impact may occur or moderate to large impact may occur. If we're talking about no impact, I think it's pretty clear. It means there's no impact that will occur if the action is consistent with the community's adopted plan and zoning, doesn't cause a change in the intensity of the land use, the quality of the existing community or its character, and does not change or impact any environmental resource or infrastructure or create a hazard to human health. If we're talking about a small impact, and again, this is all kind of relative, there's no guidance in exactly what this means, other than kind of what I'm reading off to you now. A small impact is something that's considered to be minor in magnitude, and may have smaller, limited effects on environmental resources. They are usually isolated of minimal size, intermittent, or shortened duration, and do not affect rare or unusual species habitats or resources. If it's a moderate impact, it's going to have more of an impact on environmental resources. They can also occur when impacts affect the larger part of the parcel or even a smaller extending just beyond the parcel. They could be isolated in one location or regional concern and are generally longer lasting with the duration of weeks or months. Large irreversible can be readily addressed through mitigation measures or project changes. And then finally, a large impact is an impacted sphere magnitude or cover large areas in the neighborhood or community. The impacts could be irreversible, challenging to mitigate, or wide or wide regional scale or long duration. A large impact may also be unlikely to occur, but if it does, it'd be very damaging to the environment. So that's kind of what we're going to be doing tonight as we go through it. As the lead agency, we need to go through all the Part Two questions, Sections One through 11, and using the information submitted in the Part One, answer those questions. If we come to a point where we find that there's something that has a moderate or large impact, or maybe we don't have enough information, we will take a note of that. We can always ask for more information. But I do want to note that the applicant has provided us with the detailed kind of assessment of their own write-up that they provided regarding the environmental form. So we do have additional information, but that would be something we look at after this evening. With that, I don't know, John, if you have anything else you'd like to add, I think I'm just about done with my kind of quick overview here.
Thank you. I think that's great.
Okay. Any Planning Board members have any quick questions about just kind of this overview of where we stand before we get into it later after the public hearings? All right. So Melody, I guess that kind of provides the overview. You know, from there, I think, like I say, we'll go into the public hearings. It's showing 6:15 on my computer. I guess I will turn it back over to you for that, and we'll come back to this, yeah, part two in a little while.
Okay, so we'll proceed now to the public hearing portion of our meeting. First up is Michael Gregory, 245 Route 308, for a bedroom addition site plan review. And I see Michael is here.
Hello.
So, Michael, good evening. Would you like briefly to present to the members of the planning board and the public what you're wanting to do here?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're a little soft, but I can hear you.
Okay, great. Well, we're planning on a bedroom addition on the north side of the house, in the back of the house. It is approximately 15 by 15 feet, one story. We will be redirecting our pathway from our parking area around the building and replanting the garden. Don't know exactly what else to say about it. It's a pretty simple project. It's going to allow us to have a downstairs bedroom, which my wife and I are both getting older, and that's a 1862 house, so steep stairway, and we're looking forward to having a place downstairs to sleep.
Okay, thank you. Jim, any comments you want to add?
Sorry, I was muted. No, I have no new comments. I just did want to note that AIPAC and CAB have both gone out, and nor do they didn't have any concerns.
Right. I made the site visit along with Sharon Sherrod from the CAB. It is pretty much exactly as Michael described. It's an existing historic house. The addition on the back is going to have very little impact on that house. It won't be seen from Route 308. It will be seen from the immediately adjacent neighbor. These two houses were once related to one another, hence their closeness on the property. We have received a letter from the neighbor who enthusiastically supports this addition, sees no issues with it. The only disruption in the property at all will be the removal of some gardens that are already in place that will have to be relocated. But this is a very small, very sensitively designed and very appropriate addition, in my opinion. Questions from the planning board? Any comments from the planning board?
Melody, do we need to see any kind of designs for the landscape changes? I know in some cases, some areas we do.
I don't think so. These are very modest garden beds surrounding a path. There's nothing, nothing major about it. It really is sort of the relocation of things like some peony plants and other small things like that. So it's not changing the landscape to any extent whatsoever.
Yeah, Melody, I think I was supposed to accompany you on that site visit, and I think I dropped the ball on that, so I apologize.
That's okay. We'll punish you later. Well, later in the evening, if we have new applications, we'll just give you five or something like that. No, no, no mind. Don't worry about it.
All right, sorry about that.
Any other comments from Planning Board members?
Is this a one-story addition?
Yes, it is. And I believe if I'm correct, Michael, it's about a 15 by 15-foot addition. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. And it reaches, I think, the highest point is a little over 10 feet where meets the house.
Other comments? All right, Jim, is there anyone from the public here wishing to comment?
Oh, please unmute your line or raise your hand. Not seeing Melody.
Okay, then I think we're ready to move ahead. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move Sean. Second, Edna.
Moved by Sean, seconded by Edna. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion to close the public hearing prevails. Could I, Jim, do you want to put the resolution up and run through it for us?
Okay, so tonight, we have an approval resolution for Michael Gregory for the bedroom addition at 245 Route 308. Reaffirming the action is type two under seeker based on all of the information submitted, the reports from planning board members, CAB and AIPAC. That should say, find the work is consistent with objectives and regulations of Chapter 125. With respect to the site plan approval, find that the work and intended use is consistent with Town Code Chapter 125, and approve the application inclusive of materials and plans by Kevin Young Land Surveying, dated February 22nd, 2022.
Could I have a motion to accept the draft approval resolution?
So move, Edna.
Thank you, Edna. Second, please, with that, Delise?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Delise. All those in favor? Let me pull the board. I'm sorry, Michael.
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Michael, good luck with your addition.
Thank you so much. I appreciate all your work on this.
Next up, Rebecca Tataconda, 310 Enterprise Drive Pool House Detached Garage and Utility Shed Site Plan and Special Use Permit. So I think Wendy is here. Is that correct? Yes.
Yes, hello.
Hello, Wendy.
We also have our landscape architect, Jean-Marc Plack, on the phone.
Hi, I'm here.
Hello, Jean-Marc. Wendy, would you like to tell us what you're doing?
Sure. So I'm the architect representing the family, the Tataconda family, and they would like to add a pool house, a detached garage, and a utility shed to their property. The utility shed is located right there. It's a small existing utility pad with existing utilities that will just be more enclosed and have a roof added onto it. And the second structure is the detached garage, which is located within some existing walls, little stone walls on the property. It will just be built right within that, which is currently used for parking. And the third structure is a pool house, which is also a accessory dwelling unit. And so that's proposed to be located by an existing pool. We'll be relocating the existing pool equipment to the underside of our terrace. And the pool house has an office, which will be a future bedroom, hence the accessory dwelling unit categorization. And at our last meeting, you asked us to resubmit the main elevation showing the landscape around the perimeter of the building. So that's what we're seeing there. You can see there's some woodland plantings being carried up to the base and some little special flowering plants, native plants off to the right there. So
The green roof.
And the green roof, yes, of course. So the main part of the building will have a green roof located on front, and you'll note that there's quite a few trees in front of the building, which we've cited the pool house in order to retain because it's very important to the client to keep as many trees as possible.
Okay, Jim.
No, I have no new comments or concerns. I just did want to note that unfortunately, it was found that an additional variance is going to be required for the accessory dwelling, being over 900 square feet. The ZBA has reviewed the other two variances, and they were approved, and that did include the variance for the total size of all accessory dwellings. So in effect, the ZBA has viewed the the proposal for the potential impacts, you know, on the property. But this one unfortunately is a separate section of the code that was missed when it went through the first time. Other than that, I have no, no issues or concerns with what's been proposed. I just need to work out that final variance.
And I'll note that we did submit to the ZBA this afternoon for that additional variance. So we have an application pending, and I was advised that we would be on the next meeting, the May 16th meeting.
Okay, so typically, then, if your first appearance is on the May 16th, it will take at least two meetings before the zoning board of appeals to hear back. So that could lead us to continuing the public hearing until our June 20th meeting. If I get the dates in sequence right, is that correct, Jim? Gretchen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Melody?
Yes.
I have a question, Melody.
Yeah, I was getting to that, Edna. But, okay. Go ahead.
I was just wondering whether we might consider giving approval, you know, contingent on the ZBA approval.
That is up to the planning board to discuss. I mean, we don't normally do this kind of conditional approval, but if you want to discuss it, I'm open to that.
Thank you, Edna, for suggesting that. It would certainly be helpful to keep the process moving as quickly as we can. And we would very much appreciate a conditional approval if the board would consider that.
Should we go on to the site visit?
I was under the impression we heard from that before, but
No, we didn't. Joe and Joe and I went up.
I thought that that was when you discovered the, I'm sorry, I have my, I'm sorry, I have my, they're confused. Go ahead, Edna, make your site visit report.
Joe, would you like to comment?
Sure. Just a couple of things to note. Wendy already brought them up, but as far as the placement of the pool house, they're taking into consideration these trees that are between the pool right now and what is their garden, and taking a lot of putting a lot of thought into actually making sure that they keep these trees in place because there are very nice trees by the pool. The the other thing I was going to say is the garage that they're putting in right now, it's it's basically a stone wall that is made to look like an old foundation. So I, from what I understand, is they're they're just building on top of that foundation or inside that foundation. So it won't be like a huge disturbance. There's a picture of it. There won't be a huge disturbance in placing the garage where they currently have this wall. But besides that, the utility shed that is is in the front of the house is already a enclosed structure that they just want to, I guess, improve and put the roof on to make it look cleaner. But otherwise than that, they've taken a lot of thought into the design as well as the landscaping, the beautiful landscaping in the yard.
Yeah, and I would just add that the driveway is 2,000 linear feet up a hill. No one else will ever see any of these buildings from any place, I think. And I agree with Joe that it's very nicely plotted and thought through. My my thought on the on the conditional approval was the ZBA had already been out there. You know, they kind of looked at everything. And Joe and I didn't see any reason why, you know, we wouldn't approve this or they wouldn't approve it. And I realize it is the applicant's responsibility to understand which variances might be required. But I think it wasn't mentioned to them that this would be required. So I would be in favor, and I guess I'd like to hear what other people think about.
I would agree with Edna. I feel like we inform them of the need for this variance on the site visit, and I kind of feel like I know it's their responsibility, but it was news to them. I would be in favor of giving a conditional approval on this.
I would just like to say that it was me who missed the variance. The applicant has been totally forthcoming on everything up there. I was up on the property prior to the applications going in. And I think a conditional approval, if we were to do it, certainly the circumstances here would warrant that. It's no fault of theirs that they didn't apply for the variance. They actually were the ones who said that the office in the pool house is going to be a bedroom eventually. So they've been extraordinarily transparent in what they're preparing to do here.
Not to put it all on Michael, but I missed it too. I should try to catch those. That's part of the process, but I did too.
Well, and it is ultimately my responsibility, so I appreciate everyone sharing in my lack of understanding of the code.
Delise, did you have your hand up?
I was just going to say I would support the conditional approval as well.
Anyone else from the planning board?
I don't take any, I don't take any responsibility. But I would support the conditional approval. It doesn't seem to be the result of any changes that they've made. It doesn't seem like, you know, there's something trying to slip through the the cracks here. It seems like a very straightforward omission that can be dealt with, I think, by a conditional approval by the planning board. So I would support that.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from Planning Board members? Jim, is there anyone here from the public wishing to comment?
Again, if so, please unmute your line or raise your hand.
Okay.
Don't see anyone, Melody.
Okay, then, could I entertain a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So move.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Craig. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, the motion to close the public hearing passes. Jim, do you want to put up a resolution and have you been able to, can you tweak it to get us to the point of a conditional approval?
Yeah, so, you know, what we'll have, planning board will have before them is a conditional approval, sorry, a conditional approval resolution for Tataconda for the construction of the pool house, detached garage, and utility shed at 310 Enterprise Road. Reaffirm the action is type two under seeker. We'll accept the reports from planning board members, AIPAC, even though they didn't need to submit a report, but it was submitted to them anyway, and CAB. We'll find that the application for special use permit authorized construction of the guest house is consistent with the general standards. And with respect to the application for site plan approval, find it to be consistent with the standards subject to and condition upon getting a variance from the ZBA for the accessory structure size, and I'll write that up appropriately when I put the final one together.
Could I have a motion to approve the conditional approval?
So move, Michael.
Second, Edna.
Thank you, Edna. I'll pull the board. Michael?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. All right, back to the zoning.
Very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care.
Aye.
Next up, Richard Kopchansky, One Chatsel Avenue Tavern Restaurant Site Plan and Special Use Permit, I believe. Richard are both here.
Yes.
Good evening, gentlemen. Warren, are you going to be presenting?
Sure.
Okay.
So this is an application to reoccupy the ground floor of One Chatsel Avenue, last known as China Rose, with a new restaurant. There's no proposed change to the footprint of the building. Very little, very little changes to the the exterior of the building, but as was noted, the last planning board meeting and in site visits, there is a sidewalk missing from the driveway to the upper area parking lot down to the entrance, the Chatsel Avenue entrance. And so we are proposing to replace that sidewalk, create an accessibility ramp access onto that sidewalk at the lower end, right by some juniper that's planted there. There was some discussion about using the corner entrance, as was the original entrance, I believe, when it was a hotel. And I think now the thinking is that while that will be open, they're they're narrow double doors, so they would never function very well for any kind of accessible entrance. So the thought was to maybe retain the existing entrance there on Chatsel Avenue as sort of the first entrance one comes to, but then have, as previously planned, the accessible entrance accessed by a very short ramp around the corner, which also brings you into the restaurant space. The two rooms have been opened up and are more connected than they were before with a wider opening between them. So it's really sort of one large dining area, and that will also provide on that outdoor terrace, seasonal seasonal outdoor dining, as was the case when it was last occupied by a restaurant. And that will also provide on that outdoor terrace, seasonal, seasonal outdoor dining, as was the case when it was last occupied by a restaurant. So the changes in the site plan really are calling out the sidewalk installation. We'll have to substantially reinforce the retaining wall that's along there adjacent to the, basically a hill that descends from the upper parking area down to the sidewalk. There's a large overgrown plant, I dare say, that it's sort of pushing the wall out and needs to be retained. But that's, that's kind of why the sidewalk's missing, and so it'll, it'll go back. And there, there will be a sign. I, I saw a rendering of it today. It will go in place of the existing sign, which is actually under the canvas awning at the entrance on Chatsel. So the only way you can actually see it is if you actually go to the door, stand under that awning and read the sign. But anyway, that will be subject of a signed permit application that will be filed subsequently with the zoning officer. And Richard, if you or your, or your restaurateur want to add anything to that before we take questions or go ahead, please.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
But I can't, my, you cannot start your video because the host has disabled it, Jim?
We turn off all videos when the meeting starts, Richard, that's all. So I, I turn.
Oh, I see. So I don't have to be on? Okay, fine.
Well, you should be able to get on now. I just turned it back.
I'm, I'm okay. I'm, uh.
There we go.
You are.
There I am. So yeah, so I, I don't, I think Warren hit it. I think we're just turning it back to what it was. We're reactivating or reestablishing something that's, you know, probably was a bar restaurant for 120 years, except with little breaks in between here and there, and we're just going to, it's going to be new and improved and do whatever we have to do to do the right thing.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else from your team or?
I don't know if Christopher Dorsey is on. Did, is that his name?
If you can hear me, I'm here. No, I heard and agree, and yeah, looking forward to getting it back open.
Okay, Jim, comments?
So, you know, the last meeting, I, I spoke quite a bit at length, I guess I'd say, about the parking situation. Wanted to make sure everyone is aware of, you know, kind of what's gonna happen and how things are gonna play out. We received a lot of letters of support from the residents, and I think the vast majority of them, if not all of them, said that they weren't concerned about parking. So just want to put that out there. We have, you know, we've mentioned it, we've discussed it, and it doesn't seem to be a concern. I, I do applaud Richard for putting in the sidewalk, you know, where he's proposed to do it. I would love to see it extend all the way down, you know, to the Amtrak station. So he had it all the way through. I do understand, you know, kind of why you're doing what you're doing. And it does come down from the majority, you know, I think the majority of people will be coming from since technically no one will be able to park in the Amtrak lot to access the restaurant anyway, from what I understand. So you have provided that access that I think would be the primary one anyway. Just two quick things. So, you know, Warren, you said you'll submit a separate sign permit, so that's good. We'll take care of that, and that's, that's off the table. It's not an issue for tonight. The only other thing, you know, if we do move forward with consideration of approval is that in the application paperwork, it said, Richard, you're gonna have 28 seats, I'm sorry, 28 seats of tables and 11 at the bar. The letter that we received from the county said 28 seats of tables and nine at the bar. So there'll just be a note in the approval resolution saying that the seating has to be consistent with what the county's approved, which would always be the case. But otherwise, Melody, I have no, no concerns about the project.
Okay. I'm sorry, something.
Can I just add one thing? I could probably go back to, yes, you're probably right. I made a mistake in quoting because I don't keep all the numbers in my head. I'm not trying to get two extra seats at the bar. I, but I probably could, and I might go back to the health department because, you know, as you all know, I took out a, a kitchen and a full bathroom upstairs, so I would probably be allowed to put a couple more seats in. But that, that's neither here nor there. You put in the record what was given to you, and that's fine.
Right, it, it's just stating you have to be consistent with the county health department, which, like I say, you would be, you would be anyway. Just documenting it for the record.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I believe there were a site visit made?
Yeah, and we have some photos, Jim, that I sent you.
Yes. Give me one second.
So Delise and I were out, and as we run through these, Delise, add whatever comments or thoughts you might have. We were told that no changes would be made to the building other than painting and new awnings, both over the patio and the entrance. And Warren mentioned that the planning board would see the color that is, that it's claimed, that's proposed. I think you can move on to the next. You can see a little bit of this area here that will be the sidewalk. Yeah, this is another look at the area that will be sidewalk going uphill toward the driveway to the upper parking area. And the next one is a look at this stone wall, and the more I look at it, the more I think about it, I'm wondering whether you might consider taking that plant out, or are you considering taking it out?
No.
Richard's shaking his head no.
No, there, there, I think there are a big part, Warren can speak to this also. I think it's a big part to that area. It screens the back. And I just, I would hate to take them down. It, it brings privacy to the back area there, and it just, it's a nice break from just building and cement and tarmac.
Yeah, I was thinking you might replace it with something else, but I understand you're, you're tied to it. I'm just concerned about the stone wall and its, and its pressure and, you know, its desire to lean out. Anyway, you will, you know, as you're constructing the sidewalk, put in whatever is necessary to keep that stone wall in place. I think we have a couple of other photos that show possible parking. Like, I think we counted six possible spaces along the road here and a couple at the upper level. And I think we have one last photo just up the hill a bit more is a public area that, Richard, as I understand it, is used primarily during the day for businesses and residents, but is often available in the evening. Is that correct?
Yes, it's a permit parking only during the day from Monday to Friday, and after 6 o'clock, it's open to everyone. It's permit parking specifically for Rhine Cliff residents and businesses.
And Delise, do you have any things you want to add?
I think there was a good explanation. There was some conversation a little bit about the entry. So I made one maybe suggestion, whether it's through plantings or something to sort of direct traffic. Because it's through one of the patios that seems to be the primary entrance, given that the previous entrance has a step when you walk in or two. So other than, you know, through flower pots and various ways of making that intuitive, and certainly the sidewalk, which definitely needs to happen. I mean, I think it's, I think it's great, and I think, I think there was some really great work done.
And Richard or Warren, when will we see paint and what the awning will look like or awnings?
I could, I could drop the, well, I could drop the paint chips off to Gretchen tomorrow. I mean, it wouldn't do any good showing them on screen because it never, that's not true color. So I can drop them off to Gretchen tomorrow. And Christopher, can you talk to, about the awning?
Sure, the awning is gonna stay the same as far as the structure goes, and the fabric is a cream color with a black and gold thin stripe. And I can have a sample of that for you tomorrow as well, Richard, if you want to drop it off together.
I'll wait until I pick that up. Is that okay, Gretchen? We'll drop it off with you.
Yes, that's fine.
Are we suggesting we just need that as part of the file, or are we suggesting that we hold up approval based on information on the color?
Well, it was Warren who pointed out that typically the planning board would see the color that is proposed for the building as well as the awnings. I guess I expected to see it tonight. I'm sorry.
I apologize. I dropped the ball on that. I thought, because I asked the question while we were on the site visit, could this actually not take place because of the color? I mean, I mean, can you, and then Warren called up, Warren mentioned that, that there was a house, a pink house in Ryanbeck once, and I said, I remember that house. So I can guarantee it's not gonna be pink. But you know, I wouldn't.
What color is proposed?
What is proposed is, so what's happening with many buildings in the area right now, I think Art of Building brought it here maybe four or five years ago. It's a dark color. It could be a shade of black and or black on black, or, you know, gray with a black trim. That's basically what it is. It's gray with a black trim. All that dental work along the top, all the dental work along the, over each window, that would probably be black with a basic overall dark gray. Now, the, the, the awning will be a lighter, whiter color with just streaks of a black going through it. And you'll, Gretchen will have the pieces of that tomorrow. So there's no surprise here. I mean, it's not, it's not chartreuse or lime green or pink. I mean, some people may like the building to be that color, but it's not gonna be that color.
Members, Jim, what, how do you suggest we proceed?
I mean, I didn't, I didn't realize the building was kind of changing colors and awnings and all that. I guess my only concern would be that, I know HAPAC took a look at it, didn't have any issues. I don't know if this was part of the discussion, but that would be kind of my only outstanding concern then, I guess, is that HAPAC, you know, has input on that or had it, but I don't know the answer to that. I don't think we discussed colors prior to tonight, but. Yeah, Craig?
Yeah, what's the business before us tonight? Is it just the site plan?
It would be a site plan approval, but it's a site plan and special use permit because it's in, in Rhine Cliff. It's in the historic district.
Okay, but there's a subsequent hearing for the, the sign.
Yes.
There will be.
And the, can the color be kind of rolled in with that?
I mean, the sign is its own signed permit. It's, you know, the color really reflects on the site plan. I don't know how we tie the, tie them together. I guess it depends.
Is, is, is there, yeah, a sign permit is separate, and I don't see them being lumped together, but I'm wondering if, if we'd be comfortable approving it a conditional upon HAPAC signing off on the color change? Is that a possibility?
I, I think that's acceptable based on some things we've done in the past, in my opinion.
So we would approve it, but it would be conditioned upon continued conversation with HAPAC to reach agreement on the color.
That would be okay with me.
Me too.
And are they going to approve, are they going to approve the awning as well?
Well, we can, I think it's probably a good idea to roll the two together.
It's, it's, it's not, it's not approved as much as the sign off. The planning board does the approval. HAPAC would have to sign off on it, but it's, it's a condition of the approval resolution. It would have to be okayed by them.
Warren and Richard, do you have, take any issue to this approach?
Do I?
Yeah.
No, oh, or Warren or Richard. No, whatever, whatever you think is right, I will just go along with it. I, I, I didn't think color was going to be a problem, to tell you the truth.
Well, color, color is something we ask for on any application. You know, we ask people to show us their siding and the colors they're gonna pick, so.
Yeah, I thought Warren had made it pretty clear that the planning board would want to see the color.
All right, I dropped the ball.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, Craig, is that you?
Yeah, was there any consideration given to just having the brick exposed and not having the building painted?
Oh, are you talking to me on that? Yes, that, that was a consideration when I bought the building in 1994. But because it had so many layers of paint and because of the chemicals and the sandblasting and the, where it is and situation to the river, and there's a storm drain right there, I thought it would be a huge, huge problem and environmental, environmentally not a good idea.
Okay, well, I, I wouldn't suggest that you sandblast it under any condition. But there, there are ways of proceeding in a, in a environmentally sensitive manner for exposing the, the brick, because as you see on the side of the building, the paint just kind of comes off.
That's, that's only in a couple of places. It's not the whole building, you know, that's a place maybe where it got wet or something. Believe me, believe me, I own three other brick buildings in Rhine Cliff. I would never paint them. And if this was, if this was not painted when I bought it, I would have never painted it. But I think because it was painted many years, I just had to go with it. But I appreciate the suggestion. I'm totally with you.
I, I would, I would just like to comment, you know, that the, the color that it is, even though it, the brick is not exposed, it does read somewhat as a, as a brick color. And for me, coming from the perspective of historic preservation, the change to the color palette that you've shared with us tonight would appear to me to be quite dramatic and not consistent with how I would want to read the building historically. So that, that's just my personal comment on it.
I agree with that. That's very well said. I was trying to figure out why I was having a problem with black and gray and gold and white and.
Well, I think it's, I think it's making it look like something it's not, you know, it's, it's, it's moving it away from a brick historic building in, in a small river town to something quite different with that palette.
Right.
So.
I agree. And the black and gray seems to be appearing pretty widespread throughout our community. I have a friend who refers to it as gentrification gray. And I, I think this is a pretty prominent building, and it's, you know, situated at the core of this community of Rhine Cliff, and I, I think it warrants attention.
Okay, so what we had suggested earlier was approval of the application with a referral to HAPAC so that they can concur or discuss and make decision collaboratively regarding the color palette. But I would like the comments that have been made tonight by some of us on the planning board to also be referred to HAPAC so that they know that we do have some strong opinions, at least some of us, on the choice of color.
Does that work? Quick question. Does HAPAC make the final decision about the color? And we just.
We can go two ways. We, we can go two ways, Delise. I mean, we, if we're going to make the decision on the color, then I think we have to continue the public hearing.
Got it.
I also, I think HAPAC is an advisory committee. I don't think they make final determination. I think it's up to us based on their advice.
They, they don't, unless we make it a condition of their approval resolution, essentially give them that authorization or authority, which, which again, has been done before. It wouldn't be the first time. It all depends on what the planning board wants to do, but, yeah, so I, but Melody has it right. It's a planning board decision. I don't think it can do approval tonight. If, if it's going to HAPAC, it could be considered.
I, I myself am leaning more and more toward, the longer we talk toward continuing the public hearing until we have discussions about the palette that's gonna be applied to the building. I myself think it's an important statement and something we need to retain control of within the planning board.
Melody, could, this, I guess, so we don't sit here and talk in circles for a little bit. Is it, is it possible that, Richard, that you can send this over? Is there anyone on your team that could provide an overlay of what that would look like on the building so we can make a determination next time around?
No one on my team. I don't know if, well, more Warren's on my team. Warren, can you do that in your, with your technology?
So we could see it both ways.
Then there are programs that allow you to put color, you know, on, on overlay and photographs and change colors. I wouldn't say it's, it's a super accurate rendering because it simply puts a color over a photograph, but certainly something that's a lighter shadow will look different because it's a lighter shadow. So it, it can be done, and it, you know, could give you an impression of what it would look like in a different color.
I, I think if we could just see what the final look like, would look with, with the awnings, just in general, it would just, I think it would just make the approval process simpler. And maybe it's worth showing it with a couple.
And maybe it's worth showing it with a couple of different colors that you, and so we can just. Instead of talking in circles, get this approved.
Well, and I think, I think it needs to be referred back to Haypack. So it sounds like in the field, Haypack did not have the opportunity to discuss the change in color. So I, I myself will make a motion to continue the public hearing.
I will say.
I have a second from Edna. Gretchen, when will we be continuing it to?
June 6th.
Okay, I have motion as second. All those in favor of continuing the public hearing?
Just. Is, is there any chance to do this quicker since it's a various minor change at this point? Melody, I know we're slammed. I'm just bringing it up because I don't want to hold them up from opening and handing out.
I, I want to give Haypack the opportunity to get back out there and think about this as well.
Okay, understood.
Um, all those in favor?
I.
I.
All right.
Opposed, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you. We'll get back in touch with you and see if Haypack wants to come out and make another visit.
Okay, can, can I have another question or two?
Sure.
So instead of bringing the colors and the, the swatch of the awning to Gretchen, I should probably give it to Warren.
I think that's a good idea.
And somebody mentioned because it's such a centerpiece of Ryan Cliff, does, would the Ryan Cliff public have anything to say about it?
Let me say something. Certainly, the, the public always has an opportunity to express their opinion. And I'm sure they will. But we also are charged with looking at it in terms of a lot of other aspects, so. Happy to hear from them, but we also want to hear from Haypack and other members of the planning board when we see what the options are. Since we haven't seen them, it's a little hard to comment.
And, you know, the, the public hearing is still open. So if, if people want to comment, particularly before the meeting, they can do so in writing and just send their comments into the board.
Great. Melody, we, we do still need to ask, there's public comment. I think someone actually does want to speak.
Thanks for reminding me.
Where'd you go? I thought we had someone who wanted to speak.
Maybe Zachary.
Where'd you go?
He's down, I saw him.
There you go, it's getting unmuted.
I mean, I, I realize you did just vote to, you know, push the decision to June. I don't know if it's still possible to revisit that. I'm, I'm a resident of Ryan Cliff. It's been sad for our community that we haven't had an, a operating restaurant. And I imagine operating restaurants is a very difficult business. And this would be sort of the peak time of the year when they could, you know, have outdoor dining and really bring in some cash and, you know, make a successful business. And I, I would urge the board to consider, I, I'm sure you have a lot on your plate. But if it's just a matter of color, you know, having, and, and there are swatches available, apparently. You know, having a, a quicker turnaround, I think, would be much appreciated by residents of Ryan Cliff and presumably the, the business owner.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? All right, I appreciate the comment, but I think the motion, unless there is sufficient reason to revisit it, I think the motion carries.
I, I, I just want to say one thing. I, um. I, I do, I do feel a little torn, to be honest. I feel like paint is something that, you know, as a local business owner who really relies heavily on the prime season. You know, I, and I think the community really wants it. I wonder if there is a way for, like, you know, for a solution. And also I would just note, you know, if, if you. Richard has done quite a few buildings in Ryan Cliff and it's part of the beautiful mosaic and the historic nature that exists there. So I do have tremendous faith in, in his consideration for it to be something that really supports the community and the history there. I agree, we need some approval, but is there a way, like, can it be painted in the fall and they can open? Is there a way that we can find a solution to really support the community there?
I hear these comments and I agree with all of them. I also know we have a responsibility to protect the resources in the landmark district. And I don't know myself what that middle ground is. Were he not repainting it now? Yes, we could probably go ahead, but right now he's, we have no information on the paint color.
So Melody, can I, can I throw out a thought, which is that if, if Richard gives us a little more thought and decides he doesn't need to repaint the building or change the color of the building at this time?
If, if you mean if he gives a little more thought.
Yeah.
Are you suggesting if he gives a little more thought right this minute tonight? Is that what you're saying, Warren?
Well, I haven't had a chance to talk to him outside this meeting, but he, he might want to reconsider in consultation with his restaurateur or whether they want to, you know, put, put this off for another month or something.
Well, I would have to have, I, I would have a, have to have a discussion with Christopher Dorsey, who is the restaurateur. And I don't think we can do that tonight while we're wasting your time.
Right.
But I do have another question. If I wanted to paint one of my other brick buildings, could I just go paint my buildings? Or you're saying that I couldn't paint the building? It's because somebody mentioned about the historic quality of the bricks. Now, this is something I would never do, but I, I'm just wondering. I'm wondering how far does it go? With the decisions. Decisions like this, which is, which is, which are matters of taste. And yes, there are historical colors. We all know that, you know, Williamsburg is, I guess that's the place I'm talking about, but we are not there. So I'm just wondering how far does it go? It's, it's an interesting thought, it's a question. I, I'm not being argumentative. I'm just. Want to know. It's, it's a little disturbing, is all I'm saying, but I appreciate what you're doing. But, um. There's a lot of money going into the building, a lot of taxes being paid on it. I am, you know, the, the colors of my other buildings, I've been complimented. Hundreds of times. So it's a, again, it's just disturbing.
Jim, I think you had a comment.
Well, I just, because there's, another person would like to, to make a comment, Matty Rosenberg, ready for that?
Sure.
Okay, I don't know, Matty, if you're. Where are you?
Unmute me or whatever.
Yeah. You're muted.
Great, I, I was just going to second Zach's motion or idea, not motion. If there was any way to expedite, I, I appreciate that you're concerned with the colors as someone who lives in Ryan Cliff. And I, I certainly don't take issue with that, just because of the nature of the business. If it delayed it through June, if there was any method for which that could be expedited, I would just think that would be good for everybody. That was my comment.
Thank you, Matty. John, do you have some comments you could offer? I'm not sure how to move forward with this.
Well, I think that, well, one, one possible solution, which may not be very appetizing, is the possibility of a special meeting. In between now and the meeting in June, where this could be taken up. Though that's one possible way of shortening the timeline. But other than that, I don't have anything. Creative to suggest if this is something that the board is concerned about. I think it is. I think the board should retain the control over it until. You have more information.
John, I'm just throwing this out not to put you on the spot. Could, could the planning board tonight do an approval with the building as is, not to be repainted in a different color? And make it a. It's a word I just lost, make it, make it a contingency or a requirement of the approval resolution that should the applicant, should Richard want to paint the building, he'd have to come back for another site plan approval. It's not, it's not clean and I, I'm not suggesting that's a great way to go. But, I mean, again, if we don't paint the building, I think it, it takes us off the table. It could be, it could be. I'm not.
I'm not sure, I can't answer that question because I'm not sure that the board has the authority to do that.
To do that, yeah, that's what I was thinking, okay.
And, and I don't, I don't, please, I don't think we want to open without a, a fresh look. It's just, it's, it's, it's rundown and it needs a fresh look. So I, I don't, I, I appreciate that, Jim, but I don't think we're, we would consider that.
Yeah.
Jim, could I? Pardon?
Could I make a suggestion here?
Sure, Michael.
Looked upon historic structures, alterations, things of that sort. And we've often taken the position that if something is easily reversible, it doesn't necessarily destroy the historic character integrity of the structure. Literally, paint is easily changed. It's not like they're changing fenestration doors, architecture, or anything like that. I personally am not aware of anything in the zoning law that would permit me to go out and cite someone for a paint violation. I, I don't think we have that in our code anywhere. And I think this is an instance of where I think we recognize that Richard has always done good work in Ryan Cliff. I think that says, I think that's something to take into consideration. But I think the fact that painting is easily reversible, it's not permanent. It doesn't change the structure in any way, shape or form. But that's something I think that we could in this instance say, it's not something that we need to hold up this particular application for.
Thank you, Michael.
The only thing I want to throw out there, Melody, just according to Gretchen here for a second. You know, we could move off the track system potentially and, and look at this one in two weeks. I know we don't typically do that, but I think we're, we're close to, you know, the end on this one. So we could consider that. It's not like we're in the middle of the discussion.
I like that idea a lot.
All right, because we have a motion to, I, I, I don't remember now who motioned and seconded the resolution that was previously made. If you, if Gretchen can recall that, I would ask those folks to move to amend the motion to set the meeting for the May 16th or board meeting. Does that make sense?
I think I seconded.
Melody, I think you made the motion and Edna seconded that motion.
Yeah.
All right, so I would move to amend the motion to set the date for the May 16th meeting.
And I'll second that.
All those in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, just a reminder that we still want this reviewed by Haypack and their comments back. I, I would say, Michael, I certainly agree with what you said earlier and everything you said is true. However, I do want us to be aware of how that substantive a change in color might affect the overall community within the historic district. So although, although it's reversible, it could have an impact for a, a quite a long period of time and change the character. I, I, I totally agree with everybody's comments as to the quality of Richard's work and his commitment to Ryan Cliff, the need for this, but I also want us to know that we have to be protecting that, that landmark resource as well. So I think it's fair to have the conversation at least continue to the next meeting. Okay, thank you. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Melody, before you leave on that, do you want to work out logistics with Warren and Richard about making sure that the submissions are in, in time for the board to be able to take action on the 16th?
Well, technically, that would be today, but I think it's a special circumstance. So as quickly as you can, Richard, get the material in and make sure Gretchen gets it out to the planning board. Because I think we're, this was a little different.
Well, well, then I, excuse me, I, I just want to make sure, am I just bringing that stuff to Gretchen? Or am I bringing it to Warren and he will do a, a, a rendering?
Well, I would say you do both, Richard. I would say get what you have to Gretchen so that it's officially, officially received by the planning board clerk.
You'll have it tomorrow.
In the meantime, Warren can work on some renderings and I'd encourage you to reschedule appointments with Haypack.
Okay, are we supposed to bring a pack in? Warren, you know of that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
And I did, I just want to add, you might consider an alternative as well.
Also, could I add that it, it would be helpful if, if we just had. Is there a commercial color name or code that we can look at?
I don't have them in front of me, but yeah, there are, yeah, I'll get, I'll get the color swatches and I'll give them to Gretchen and, and she could give you the color codes and the, the paint company and all of that. Yeah, absolutely.
And, and I would, I would piggyback on Edna's suggestion that you might consider some options so that both Haypack and the planning board can look at a couple of choices. Okay, have we covered it? Thank you, everyone, for your patience and your attention. Um, next up, Heinz Wilder Cliff LLC, 524 Mill Road. Site plan and special use permit garage building. I see Christopher Heinz here and I think I saw Mark Graminsky representing this project, is that correct?
That's correct.
Like, good evening.
Good evening. Okay, Mark, I think you want to give us an overview and clarifying exactly what we're looking at tonight.
Um, so the, so the previous meeting, which was two weeks ago, made a presentation to the planning board and a reduction of scope of the project for, for the Heinz residence, which is located at the intersection of Morton Road. And originally, we had made application for phasing work that was going to be done on the property. You know, specifically some landscape additions to the property, improvement, landscape additions and improvements to the property along with potentially a, a pool house that was going to be associated. You know, with, that, that was associated with the previous site plan. Those, those two items, and they were, and I had previously, previously sent them in a, in a submission document that had, you know, phasing associated with the project. And so at the last planning board meeting, those two phases were, were eliminated. As I just mentioned, the additional landscaping and also improvements, structural improvements with the, including the, the pool house. And then, so it was simply, the application was simplified to the, the new garage that's being proposed to be connected, having, you know, having a breezeway connection to the existing barn on the property. And, and also to, to finalize the improvements that have, that were, that have been proposed on the west side of that barn. And then just speaking to the improvements on the west side of the barn, those have gone through, you know, some changes and, and an evolution to what the planning board is seeing at this time. And so just to, you know, as, as I said before, the, the garages, we, we've had discussion about that for multiple meetings. And it also required application to the town, the town of Ryan Beck, a zoning board of appeals. You know, due to its proximity to the front yard relative to the principal residence. And that, that area variance has been granted by the ZDA. So, and then, you know, it, it also, we have had discussion and have shown renderings with regard to that breezeway connection to the, to the barn and, and the garage. And then finally, as I just, you know, just mentioned, you know, the west side of, of the barn, the elevation. I, I mentioned there were some changes, you know, initially there was a, in an exterior fireplace that was proposed. That has been removed. And then some, you know, skylights were, are now shown on that, on that western roof along with. You know, two. you know, two, you know, two, a, a glass doors that are, are shown on each side of, they're, they're actually right below those skylights. And then there is a, there's also another window that's shown. And then finally, the, the one, the one change that has been, that has occurred is that a, a previous application has, has shown a modification on that west elevation in the location of the stable. And so that has been eliminated. And so there's an existing window that's located in the, in the stable area that will remain. So that, that change to that stable window has, has been eliminated and the, the existing window will, will remain as it is. And so I think that summarizes what is in, in front of the planning board this evening for consideration. I also note that, you know, one of the tasks that was that I was assigned with at the, at the conclusion of a meeting two weeks ago was to, you know, coordinate final review with HAPAC. And I, I believe that has also occurred and a, a letter has been, has, has been prepared and sent to the planning board.
Thank you, Mark. So long and short of that is, we are only looking at the garage addition. Right?
No, I, I, I thought that the, this, it would be the garage addition and also a finalization of the exterior, the west side of the barn.
Okay, Jim, does that close out the previous, the original approval of resolution?
Well, it, it doesn't close it out. I mean, the garage placement would take care of that last remaining issue of HAPAC. You know, working with the applicant to come up with the decision on how to, how to handle the garage. So the garage, yes, that would close it out, but the previous proof resolution still stands for the other changes that would have been made that aren't in this one. And there were some like the landscaping, other things Mark mentioned.
Okay.
So this one, this one, I, again, I thought was, I thought it was just the garage, but Mark, it's the garage and it's the windows we're looking at here on this sketch on the west side of the barn. Do you look for tonight? That's correct. Pardon me, my understanding is that the French doors to either side of the previously proposed fireplace had been approved under the previous resolution. And that what we're proposing to do is remove that previously proposed fireplace, outdoor fireplace, and replace it with one additional window. So that's really the, the one thing that we're asking for in terms of modification. This, this one in the middle here, right, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
Okay, Jim, do you have any additional comments?
No, I didn't catch it. The window was part of that, but nonetheless, it doesn't change any of my comments. The variance has been approved, as Mark said, for the garage. I don't have any planning issues with anything that has been proposed. So really just discussion for the planning board on the garage location proposal on the window.
Okay, there was a site visit on the garage quite some time ago, but I don't know of any additional information that's come in since then. Questions or comments from planning board members?
It's good to me.
Other planning board members? Jim, is there anyone here from the public wishing to comment?
So please unmute your line or raise your hand or both.
Melody, I'm not seeing anyone.
Uh, if there's nothing, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Edna.
Thank you, Edna. Second, second, Craig, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion to close the public hearing passes. Jim, could we have the motion of approval, draft approval? Okay, Jim, do you want to run through that?
Sorry, I was muted. The draft approval resolution for the planning board's consideration would be for site plan, special use permit for construction of the garage and addition of the window or the fireplace from the previous plans in 524 Mill Road. So I'll make that minor modification. We are reaffirming the actions type two under seeker based upon review of the submitted information from planning board members, CBWAC, HAPAC, that should say so, all that, and find the work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter 125. With respect to the application for special use permit, find the work and intended use to be consistent with the general standards for special use permits and would grant the special use permit. And with respect to the application for site plan approval, would find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent again with chapter 125, section 12575, approving the application materials and plans submitted by Mark and others.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution?
So moved, Edna.
Thank you. Second, please.
Second, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. I'll pull the board. Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Good luck with your project.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night. Next up, the Rhinebeck Community Nursery School, 34 Brookmead Drive for Playground Site Plan Amendment and Special Use Permit. I would like, well, who is here representing the nursery school?
Before we go, I, I'm gonna recuse myself from the nursery school because of a family connection.
Okay, thank you, Craig. I'll let the record show that Craig is recused. Jim, do we want to hear from the applicant or do you want to share an update on this first?
With applicants here, I think maybe applicants attorneys here as well. And if you want to make a, a comment, then we can certainly get into the issue, discussion of that. I don't know, you're here representing RCNS.
Todd Hirsch, I'm with the law firm of Rodinghouse, Shell, and Palladoro. I'm representing the Rhine Cliff Community Nursery School and Brookmead in their application for an amended site plan and a special use permit for the installation of an outdoor play area. We, we will be submitting revised site plans based on the comments we received last, at the last meeting. But we were hoping for some guidance from the zoning administrator regarding the front setback issue, which I can talk more about.
So, I mean, maybe we can get into that, but you know, if we're going to talk to the zoning administrator, really could probably do that offline, directly with him, you know, in, in the ZA's office unless the planning board wants to hear that discussion. I do know, you know, Michael, you can, you know, help me out if I'm, I'm wrong here, but there's an issue that was identified related to some unauthorized uses taking place on the property, not directly related to the nursery school, but related to, to Brookmead. And it was my understanding that until that issue is resolved to some level, that this project as proposed right now cannot move forward, at least with the planning board. Now, Michael, did I get that right?
Yeah, that is correct. Yes, they're under a notice of violation for you have a use or uses on the property, which they have no permit for and which, in addition to the fact that they're not allowed in the RC5 zoning district. And our zoning law prohibits the planning board for taking up applications, which for projects on properties that have a notice of violation, active notice of violation, for the violation is cleared up. And in this case, it is not cleared up.
Right, so, so we won't be taking, I'm sorry, Melody, say we won't be taking any action tonight. I, I do think, I know you have a question, Todd, about the front, you know, the very potential variance, which if you want to talk with the ZA, that could probably be done offline, I think. But Melody, I'll turn over to you.
No, I, I think the situation has been very clearly expressed. I, I do want to confirm or just to clarify, the violation is not something that was created by the nursery school. So despite the fact that we are not able to continue reviewing this at this time, I want that to be clear in the record. This is something that is, is outside the purview of the nursery school itself. However, we are precluded for continuing, to continue this at this point. So we're going to have to continue the public hearing and since I know many things are being discussed, I think at this point, our best, best guess is to continue it until July 5th to give the process some time to work itself out.
Is there, excuse me, respectfully, is there any chance we could have an earlier date? Because we do have grant funding that we're relying on to build the playground and the grant expires in August.
Now, Melody, could I, could I speak to this, which might be helpful?
Sure.
In my letter and my notice of violation, I suggested all that's required to clear it up, at least temporarily, is a letter the administrators at Brookmead stressing that they will no longer in any way pursue the uses listed and discussed in the notice of violation. They can, at later time, they, their number of avenues, they can pursue if they wish to try and get those uses permitted. But if they were to provide me with that documentation signed and dated, they're assuring me that they will not in any way, shape, or form continue in those uses that would clear this violation at this point and that would permit the nursery school to go forward with its application. So I would suggest, if you wish to proceed with this, that you have a good, long talk with the administration at Brookmead.
Thank you.
So. Where does, where does that leave this? And if such a letter were provided, could this be put on an earlier date or what? You know, what's that story?
Well, we, we, we don't know. The answer to that is, we don't know. We have not heard from, it's my understanding that since the notice of violation was put in place, we have not heard directly from the Brookmead representatives. I appreciate Todd's point. However, you know, the nursery school is a tenant on the property. They are not the owner of the property. And I'm, I'm mindful of the fact that we're trying to expedite everything, but you know, we just are, we're just stacked up here. And when people are not producing the information we need, I, I don't know how we keep shoving everybody in, you know, shorter, shorter, shorter. I, I'm sympathetic, but I'm also personally exhausted by all of this. You know, everybody, I, you know, the nursery school has been in this situation before. And, you know, unfortunately, we don't get representatives from Brookmead at the, at the meetings to answer the question that you're legitimately asking, Edna.
Excuse me, Melody? This is Rebecca from the nursery school. Brian Ziden is here from Brookmead and his lawyer is here as well. And he has assured me that they are in a position to write that letter to assure the planning board that there will be no continued events in that space. And so we will be able to get that letter, they will be able to get that letter to ASAP and we will be able to continue with our application. So we respectfully request that we get put on the June 6th meeting agenda.
I'm, I, thank you, Rebecca, for sharing that, you know, and I appreciate it. I wish we'd had that information prior to being in the middle of the discussion. It would have helped.
Prior to the meeting this evening?
Yes.
Okay.
That would have been helpful. It would have helped us along if they'd had a conversation with the zoning administrator.
Right.
Planning board members, what's your pleasure? We are not able to take any action tonight, so we must continue it. I guess it's just a discussion of when you want to continue it too.
And Melody, I also want to see if there is anyone from the public that wants to speak since this is a public hearing. But yep, those two things.
Yep.
I certainly have sympathy for the nursery school and, and yet I understand everybody's frustration on this. Todd, what do you think about continuing it to June?
If that's the pleasure of the planning board, we can take that up when we have a resolution at the end. Jim's point is, I believe that there may be some members of the, well, let me just back up.
Melody, if I could say, speak to that point, since we're not in a position to continue the review of this because of the notice of violation, taking public comment, I, I believe would also fall under continuing the review process. I know people are here to speak, but because of the notice of violation, I don't know legally if we can do that because that would be part of the review process.
Hi, am I able to speak or is our, I don't know if I can hear?
Excuse me, I, I didn't hear what you said, but I was actually going to ask our attorney to reply to Michael's comments.
Yes, Melody, I, I think that if the review is first all, the board should not accept comment tonight. The public hearing can be continued over to when this is picked up again.
Thank you, John.
Is there an opportunity for representatives of Brookmead to speak?
I, 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 my sense is that this is something you should be addressing with the zoning administrator, but I will again defer to.
We sent him an email yesterday, tried to set up a meeting with Michael today.
Excuse me, Brian, Brian, I, I'd like to get.
This is Sean Kemp speaking.
I'm, I'm sorry. John? I, I saw a copy of your email, Sean, and that was sent, I believe, on Sunday.
That's correct.
Right, and.
Why would you state that there is no attempt by Brookmead to reach out to the zoning administrator?
What?
Brookmead, Brookmead has been quiet about this. We've already sent a letter stating that to the extent that there were any violations that we agreed not to commit any or engage in any conduct that would violate any further notices or things of that nature, we sent that to you. That's how I was able to go the last time around. So I'm a little bit confused why we're using this alleged violation as a pretext to delay an application by a preschool that's been pending for months now.
I think that was explained.
Bend over backwards for other applicants, it just seems. So I'm a little bit concerned about this.
Melody, I think I would clarify this point here if I could.
Yes, Michael.
All right, the original letter that was sent was dealing with the Arts Cafe, saying they didn't agree that they were violating, but they would no longer illicit at the Arts Cafe. Three days later, I received a number of different advertisements, videos, print advertisements for the event center. Come have your wedding, come celebrate your birthday and things like that. Three days after, I received the letter about the Arts Cafe. Therefore, I have to really question the integrity of what is being said here tonight by the representatives of Brookmead. And sending an email Sunday afternoon, I spoke with the attorney, the prosecuting attorney for the town of Rhinebeck, and she contacted Victoria, who was the one who sent the email Sunday afternoon. My normal hours are Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 9:30 to 11:30 at Town Hall. So to expect me to respond to something that I'm not even supposed to be in the building is a little bit.
Michael, I wasn't expecting you to respond to it. I'm just saying that there was an attempt to reach out to you.
I did have the attorney who worked with me respond to Victoria. I don't know if Victoria perhaps did not.
That's fine, that's fine. Again, I just want to be clear. I'm not, I'm not saying that I expected you to get back to us today or that you, I expected you to have a meeting with us today. I'm simply saying that we did reach out to you. As soon as I learned about this meeting being scheduled, I got on the phone with Victoria and I said, in no way does Brookmead want to prove, be any type of obstacle to the preschool being able to go forward with their application. We will do whatever is necessary in order to make sure that their application can proceed.
All right, thank you. I'm not trying to cut anybody off, but I am trying to keep what the planning board is involved in strictly, planning board issues. The, the issue between the zoning administrator in the town and the violations that are alleged is something that is not within the purview of the planning board. And so I believe, John, Jim, I think we are at point of really just making a motion to continue the public hearing.
I agree, Melody. It's, yeah, that's why I said, I think it's, it's a matter for discussion with the acting zoning administrator. And since John has advised that we're not going to, you know, be taking public comment or moving this forward until that issue is resolved, the ZA's satisfaction. And yes, I think we just continue this now. We, you know, we understand something's been submitted, but I think at this point, we need to continue the public hearing and move on to the next one.
I agree.
I agree. The only other note that I would make is I would urge the parties to bear in mind that there are submission deadlines for the board. And in order for this to move forward at the next meeting, any material that is intended for the board needs to be received by the submission deadline in advance of the meeting.
Okay. And in the interest of helping this applicant, the nursery school along, I believe it's the sense of those on the board that they would like to continue it to the earliest possible time, which would be June 5th. Is that the sense of the planning board?
I move that, we do that.
I second. June 6th, Melody, just to make sure.
Sorry, sorry. I misspoke, June 6th, thank you. Who is the second?
Sean.
Sean, all those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you, the motion carries.
Jim, what is the submission deadline for the June 6th meeting?
It's two weeks in advance, right?
Okay.
It'd be the May meeting date.
Be the May 16th meeting, I believe.
Okay, thank you, Gretchen.
Okay, next. Good evening, T Court, Phase 2, 195 River Road, miniature train, Central and Southern Loops, site plan, special use permit and wetlands permit.
I'm back.
Okay.
Yeah, Melody, I'll make this very easy for you. We have, since the last hearing, we have submitted the revised engineering plans for the train. So they're all up to date with the current design and the tables for the sizes of the trussels clearly shown, as you can see in this, in this illustration. And we've also sent to you the manual that Dave Scotty promised from the last hearing. So that's available for you for the review. I think that covers everything that we discussed at the last hearing. Turning back to you.
Thank you. Mark, anything you wish to add?
Uh, no, not, not at this time.
Jim, any comments?
Yep, so really quickly, just want to clarify, we, as Howard said, we did receive new plans and those plans do show the highest trussel being no, no, shall I say, it's under 20 feet. So we have no issues with the accessory height anymore. We did hear from the fire department, they were on the last meeting, they had no issues with the project. So that clarifies that question and concern. The only thing that I have remaining that I still have a question about that I don't necessarily pull this up is just that I don't believe we've seen any documents about a dismantling plan. I know we haven't really discussed that in the past as something that I thought kind of made sense. I think we kind of talked about how pretty much just be taking it back out the way that it went in. I don't think it asked to pull this up, but I do think, you know, with, with the submission for stamp and seal would be good just to have a piece of paper that essentially states that. I know we had a presentation saying that you're going to come in with a crane and a small equipment or whatever. If you could just essentially write something up that does that in reverse, that gets submitted with the projects. I think that's all I really need, nothing particularly complicated, just something clarifying that we're going to have minimal impact if it ever is removed.
Yeah, that's easy.
That's, that's all I have.
Howard, you're willing to do that?
Yeah, we can cut that to you immediately.
Well, I just make sure it's attached to the final submittal.
Yeah.
Questions, comments from planning board members?
I want to know if Howard's going to go on the train.
A lot of people have asked that question, including my wife. I certainly intend to. It's been a lot of years working on this.
Jim, is there anyone from the public here wishing to comment?
Not seeing anyone, Melo.
Okay. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Edna.
Thank you, Edna, second please. Thank you, Craig. All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Hi. Hi.
Opposed? Abstentions, the motion to close the public hearing carries. May I have Jim the motion up, the approval?
Okay, draft approval resolution for T Court Phase 2B, which is a confirmation of the mini train. Reaffirming the action is type 2 under seeker, accepting the submitted information, reports from planning board member site visits, CBWAC. And then again, I will add an HAPAC. With respect to this special use permit, authorizing work, find the proposed work is consistent with the general standards for special use permits. With respect to the wetlands permit, find that it is consistent with the wetlands permit requirements. And with respect to site plan approval, find the proposed work and intended use is consistent with Town Court Chapter 125. And we'll approve the application inclusive of the materials and plans by Mark Raminsky, Marie Engineering and Hollander Landscape Architects, among others.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved, Edna.
Thank you, Edna, second please. I think it was Joe, was that right?
Yes.
Thank you, Joe. I will pull the board. Michael.
Hi.
Delise.
Hi.
Craig.
Hi.
Edna.
Hi.
Sean.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
And I vote aye. Go forth and build a train.
Thank you very much, Melody.
All right, take care, everyone. Next up, Thomas.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thomas Daniels, 8 Slate Dock Road, improvements to the property, site plan and special use permit.
Good evening, it's Robert Murray, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Donna and Tom Daniels are with us as well. And we are back with what I hope is a quick explanation of what we recently submitted and where, and where we think we're at. So again, 8 Slate Dock Road, we are proposing to take down the small old cottage that is there and to build a, a new house. The new house required three variances. I should say new house with, with garage. The three variances were the size of the house exceeded the 2,300 permissible in the Rhine Cliff overlay district. Our, our proposed house is 2512 square feet. So it's 9% larger. Secondly, we're putting our garage in what is technically per code called the front yard. And, and lastly, the accessory structure exceeds 20 feet. It is 23 feet 8 inches. Most, I think the list of requests after discussion included by yourself, actually, Melody, some landscaping. So we provided most recently a, a plan showing some planting along the property line between 8 Slate Dock and 4 Slate Dock. Otherwise, I thought the combined and multiple visits from CAB last August and planning board, board last year, but planning board and zoning board again last month, in March, actually. Were pretty successful. We, we received feedback in both parties and incorporated the, the minor changes that were presented to you last month and tonight. So I think we're looking forward to maybe some reaction from the planning board and, and some good faith. Maybe we'd love to know that we satisfied your questions and need for information.
Thank you, Robert. And what is your status with the zoning board of appeals?
The zoning board of appeals loves us, except that I would say I made a typo on one of the applications. In fact, it's the building. I could, I could look for it right here. I sent it back to them. 23 foot 8 was typed as 23 foot 6. And they said this is unacceptable. It's got, it really should, it needs to be consistent and exact. So we, they could not, they could not close the public hearing or resolve it, the otherwise I feel would have. So we're looking forward to that at the next zoning board meeting.
Okay, so that, that's been continued.
Right.
Okay. Jim, do you have comments?
Just a couple kind of follow ups. One is that, you know, I want to make sure that all the engineers' comments have been addressed, the CPL's comments, I should say, have been addressed. I don't know if we have a kind of a final sign off letter on that. We need to, to look into that. But given that we're still looking for the ZBA to, to address the variances, I don't anticipate approval tonight. One specific issue, I still don't think, I don't know, Robert, if you've discussed it, maybe I just missed it, is that, you know, CPL myself both talked about the issue that the driveway grades are in excess of 6%. And I know we talked about this before. There are specific requirements in the code that that area, you know, needs to either be paved or improved. I think you had talked about that being a potential, but I don't think we came to kind of any consensus or specific of what you plan to do for the driveway on those steep slope areas. Is that something you've discussed and kind of come to consensus on?
In fact, and in fact, well, first, I, I would say quite reasonably, we, we are not proposing any changes to the driveway itself, just to the, the improvements to the house. So I didn't, I thought reasonably so, I didn't want to commit these, these residents and landowners to doing something, to doing something that was already existing and, and accepted by the town. In fact, though, the owners readily agreed that he wants to make improvements to the driveway. So I think I, I would still prefer not to, well, you, you might tell me I have to put it on the plans.
Yes, whatever, whatever you want to do, it needs to be on the plans. That's essentially where I was going to go. We don't need to really talk about it, just, you know, get it on the plans and make sure that those are provided, you know, for the.
So, so. So could we just clarify one thing, Jim? So if we're not planning on changing the grade to the driveway, is that okay? Or are you saying we need to change the grade of the driveway?
I'm just saying it needs to be consistent with what the code states. So take a look at the code. If it's, if it's a steeper slope, there are just requirements that go with that, whether it's paving or another type of surface material. You know, have, have Robert take a look at it and you guys could decide what you want to do. I don't think it necessarily dictates you have to change the grade. I know it's a tough site, but on steeper grades, there are requirements for certain materials to make sure it doesn't wash out and things like that. And, you know, we just had another application, I think, last time or the time before that, where same thing, you know, someone's putting in a house and said, why do I have to improve the driveway that's 1,500 yards away at the state road? Well, that's the code, that's, that's a requirement. So just take a look at the code and make sure you're meeting that requirement, put it on the plans and that'll suffice as long as we're consistent with the code requirement.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not, not dictating what you need to do, just make sure it's, it works with the code requirement.
No, thank you. I think, I think actually the Daniels will very much enjoy improvements to the driveway.
Yep. And then, you know, the other two comments I had, yeah, two other comments, Melody, just, one, Robert, make sure all the numbers are the same between the planning board and the ZBA. You just, you know, let us know that, that ZBA change was there, so just make sure that's all consistent. And then regarding a number of the new sheets that you provided to us, including the steep slopes plan, I just didn't see any of the stamp and seal boxes and the typical information that's on there, like you had submitted the first time around, kind of with your typical borders on and things like that. So those all are going to need all the typical stamp and seal boxes, you know, your, your information on it, you know, edit dates and revision dates, things like that. Make sure those are all in proper form when they're submitted, if when they're submitted for stamp and seal.
I can take care of that on the next, I can take care of that next. Just a note, though, the towns engineer, CPL, has been somewhat unresponsive. I, I think I've satisfied, I summarized, addressed, created documents, I think I addressed everything. They were originally, sorry.
I was just saying, I could check in with them and kind of see where things stand.
Thank you. The letter I got, invited me to contact them directly, but I haven't received a response. I mean, I'm happy to, I, I would just hate to get comments another month from now that are negative or asking for more information.
Yeah, I'll, I'll catch up with CPL and see where things stand and make sure that we get that connection.
Thank you.
Yep.
Planning board members?
Could we see the landscape plan?
You're gonna have them, I'm looking for it. Do you know what, what the sheet was called, Robert, with the landscaping on?
Yeah, it could be, it could be the rendering, I'll, I'll tell you what I labeled, it should be.
2B. I think it's 2B.
It's, it was labeled with a prefix with a 2 on the submission I just sent you. I can show it myself if you wanted to share, me to share the screen.
We, we made a rule, we don't do that on public meetings. Give me one second, I'll, I'll find it.
That's Alderkill.
So just to preface, that's to preface the, here it comes. So Melody, while we were on site, was concerned that we had some nice plantings. And one, we, we informed her that, yes, the owners weren't going to just cut everything down, throw them away. They'll, they'll keep them, they'll move them, for instance, where they're in the proximity of the garage. But in addition to that, it was suggested by, I think by both zoning board members during a site visit and planning board members, that why don't we plant some more greens behind the garage? So the barrens at 4 Slate Dock could see less of the garage. And we said, we were agreeable to that. So that's why we're showing arborvitae. But, but I would give you one of my own criticisms of this rendering. I think the barrens might, might prefer us not to plant things that just grow tall because that defeats the whole purpose. And we're, we're trying to be very considerate. So what we will enjoy doing, I believe, in a very simple and practical way, is coordinating with them when we go to do the work and, and very purposely putting things that complement both neighbors' privacy, but don't, don't harm their view to, to the northwest that you see here.
Well, since you'll be. Go ahead, Edna.
Well, that was my concern, that we have these arborvitae marching on here across the entire viewscape of, of the river. Seemed unnecessary to me.
I was going to, I was going to suggest, Robert, that since you got to discuss the driveway improvements, it also gives you time to discuss exactly what you're talking about with the neighbors. And then you can come back with exactly what you want to be putting in there or not putting in.
Well, I, I exactly don't want to give you a landscape plan because I think the owners aren't really interested in re-landscaping the property. They like it the way it is. So I, I think, I think what I'd like to show you is just some bushes, shrubs, arborvitae shielding the house and garage from the neighbors, really, that's all.
Well, show us what you want to do.
Okay.
And there, I'm just, I'm just suggesting you have time. So just roll that into your thought process.
So I, I think then what I'd like to do is come back to you next month with my ZBA approval and with a landscape plan that shows what, what I think should be reasonable and minimal. I think the focus is really shielding the garage.
And also with any driveway improvements, and we will get back to CPL to make sure that we have their sign off and to encourage them to get in touch with you to make sure that everything is okay.
Thank you.
Are those all the points we have to cover, Jim?
If I could just add, sorry, this is, this is Donna Daniels. I mean, right now, they're not in the drawings, but there are a row of bushes that already exist. You know, they're, they're not 10 feet tall, but so for half the year, when, when they have leaves on them, there's, there's a full row of like leaf fences. And then during the, the winter months, like you see here with the, the trees with no leaves, and then you can see more between the two properties.
Thank you, Donna. Planning board members?
So we're going to essentially see a different way that the, the garage and perhaps also the house are going to be screened without screening out the river view. Am I correct?
That's what it sounds like.
I think what I'll suggest is everything from the garage north is low, low lying. And in fact, what Donna noted, the shrub line along the property line is very significant in the summer. It, it's, it's very bushy, it's probably eight feet tall when it's in. And then in the, in the winter, it thins out and you can see through it. So I think our focus will be the garage and we'll, we'll minimize or eliminate anything new going to the north.
Okay. So I believe we need to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing. Gretchen, when would that be continued to?
June 6th.
And that will get us past the zoning board of appeals, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, could I have a motion to continue the public hearing until? Okay. Could I have a motion to continue the public hearing until June 6th?
So move Sean.
Thank you, Sean. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, Rockledge, 492 Ackert Hook Road condo units. Site plan approval, special use permit and wetlands. I believe we have had a written. I, I believe we've had a written request to continue the public hearing. Is that correct, Gretchen? Jim?
Yes.
I think Marcus now off the phone. Marcus, we have your written request. Is there anything you'd like to add?
I know. That's it.
Jim, do we, do you have any comments, Jim?
Not at this time, no.
Any questions or comments from planning board members?
Only that I'm recused.
Thank you, Edna. All right, Jim, is there anyone from the public here wishing to speak?
So please raise your hand or turn on your screen and we'll call on you in the order. I see you come up on the screen. Just give me a second, Melody, just make sure. I'm not seeing anyone's hand, well.
I'm also. Sorry, my name's Eliza Mulvaney. I don't mean to interject, but I'm also very concerned about this. There's a point where I could have a small time to say something. That'd be great.
Yep. I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, so Eliza, turn on your screen, I think.
Sorry, let me.
Let's finalize if you want to go ahead.
There we go. Is it on? Okay, sorry. I'm sorry, what was that?
We also need an address.
If you can say your name and the address for the record.
Of course. My name's Eliza Mulvaney. I live on seven Charles Lane in Reinbeck. So I'm right near the, the development where it would happen.
Okay, and do you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm generally concerned with the, the amount of traffic that would be added to the area with that many condos popping up. It seems like it's a little bit dense to add so many new homes. It's just kind of jarring for everyone in the neighborhood, I'd say.
Thank you, Eliza.
Along with that, the displacement of wildlife is also a concern, I would say. I mean, that's, that's like, it is a lot of acreage, but a lot of it is wetlands. And I know that that's probably been brought up in the past. However, it's still something like, I don't know, that's, it's a very small cluster of houses. And I just wonder how, how this proposal will affect the, the neighborhood in terms of cars coming by. I mean, what was the proposed amount of cars? Seventy-two, I think they said. But that's only saying if they leave their house once a day and don't return. So like, it's going to be a lot more than seventy-two added cars on the road. And that poses a threat for people who walk on the road, which there are so many who do, and run and bike ride and walk their dogs and all that stuff. Not to mention the general commute. And I heard tell of some kind of speed bumps being added, but I wonder how will that affect like the, the highway department and snow removal and maintenance for the road? It just feels kind of like the development is actually punishing the people who live here. And it isn't even really targeted towards people who live in Reinbeck. It seems to be targeted towards people who live in the city, saying that they would accommodate home offices and things like this.
Thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Jim, is there anyone else?
Hi, yeah, Seamus Hetty, 491 Primrose Hill Road. I'd like to just second the, the concerns about environmental impact and then traffic impact. I can also say that, you know, I, that's on my running route. Hey, run down there every day, walk my dog there, see people all the time on the road. It is a pretty quiet neighborhood and, and even just seventy-two cars is, is a lot to, to add there. So yeah, I'm equally concerned.
Thank you. Jim?
Anyone else? Eleanor?
Yeah, I just want to say that it just seems like an awful lot of variances are given out on wetlands. And you really can't, once you destroy a wetland, there's not really any way you can, you can, you know, reconstitute it. And I'm just concerned about the amount of wetland that we're, we're losing. And I think it would be really interesting if the town would do a little bit of a study to see how many wetland, you know, applications are approved. And how many are not approved? And people say, well, it's only 15 feet here, 20 feet there. But that's a lot and it adds up because we're not that big of a township. So I think that we really need to be a little bit more careful moving forward in terms of giving out some of these variances. Thank you.
Jim?
I'm not seeing anyone else. Can I just make one or two comments, Melody? That's all right, just to the comments that were made. One is that regarding wetlands, we aren't giving out variances for wetlands. There are permits for wetlands. And I just think based on my three years at the town, they've mostly been, you know, wetlands related to the buffer area, not intrusions into the wetlands. There've been very few of those that I've seen in three years. I also would just like to make sure everyone on the calls where the Duchess County just came out with the housing needs study. They, you can find on their website. And, and it's been put out there publicly. It's a really interesting read. Everyone should take a look at it. Talks about the need for both lower income housing, for lower income needs, as well as the need for actually higher income housing. To help satisfy that need in Duchess County because there's downward pressure from people buying higher end housing that are buying the lower end houses and then pushing out people. Who then otherwise buy those, those cheaper houses and cheaper properties all throughout Duchess County, not just in Reinbeck. So just want to put it out there that the county planning department has released that housing study. But I think it's a good thing to take a look at, given what's going on in the town and Duchess County.
Thank you, Jim. All right, if there is no one else from the public wishing to comment, could I have a motion to continue the public hearing until June 6th? All of these public meetings, as usual, will start at 6:15.
Oh, moved.
As Michael may have a second.
Second, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed extension motion to continue is carried. Next up, Alderkill, Carl Duncanberg, 15 Ballenbecker Road, major subdivision, sketch plan and major subdivision. Good evening, Carl.
Hi, everyone. I have Jordan Baldini here, as well as Alan Rappelier, along with me.
Okay. Would you like to refresh our memory?
Sure, Jordan. We submitted a new plan, so I'll, we'll turn it over to him.
Okay, yep, really, it's fundamentally the same with these modifications. Lot one, we have changed the shape of the lot one, which is kind of the furthest to the north of the proposed lot. Just a little bit because the wetland flags kind of curled around the top, if you will, went along the northern boundary of it. And so we pulled that in, in deference. We didn't have to for the property boundary, but it's a, seemed a kind of a natural recognition of a, of a wetland boundary. We, we pulled that boundary into the north and therefore it bumps out a little bit to the east. So that's the property, notable property modification to the shape of one of these proposed lots, same size lots. We proposed plantings along the driveway entrance to create some visual buffering, all native local plants. Yeah, there is actually a zoom in. I believe it was two before we went zipped past it. That one, the one right before this one. There it is, yes. And we also, yeah, so near the road, it's kind of small in this view. But yeah, near the road, you'll see some colorful little symbols of plants. And down below, you'll see a key as to what those are. It's basically a, a repeat pattern of six or seven plants. And then also we, we did plantings along the wetland buffer on lot one, which is not, yeah, if you kind of pan and then go to the north, which is up the page. You see those plantings to give a visual indicator for the person who will occupy that lot someday. We also provided greater detail for any of the driveway conditions. And driveway profiles and the proposed slope. And we always made sure the slope was under the required 15%. Those are all the different driveway sections. Those are all the profiles over the next two or so pages. So it's quite detailed now and it qualifies. The proposal is to present an erosion and sediment control plan, which is fairly simple. But we, we, we have a sheet that shows the direction where all the, kind of the stormwater. Yeah, it's, I think sheet C3, which is the fourth page, I believe. Yes, all those kind of light blue lines delineate the natural boundaries of sub catchment areas. But in the end, it's a kind of simple tale. The wetlands through this property could, in one way, be described as a kind of a morphed letter Y. Where one of the, one of the arms of the Y has two branches. But anyway, forgive the imperfect description of shape. But what happens really is water from the west and the south and the east and the north. All enters this property, gets to the wetlands and seasonal streams or stream, landsman kill. Ultimately, the direction, it goes to the northwest of the property. And, and so of course, our proposed work is on the western boundary of this property. And we were able to catch via swales and slowing down via catch, check dams. Really, any, any of the water. And other than that, it's, it's contained and slowed on site, like water from the roof. So these plans do have all that detail and information. And so really, they're just more detailed of the same plan with the minor modification to the shape of lot one.
Okay. Anything else to add, Carl, or anyone else from your team? Carl, you're muted.
I said I don't believe so. Jordan, do you have anything else you want to add up top?
Oh, no, just that we met all the bullet points of the DEC and their wetland permit application. They should have replied already. I'm not chiding them, of course, but they're, by their own words, they were going to have responded, but, but they haven't, you know. But they will any day is my point. We also have our general permit in and, and okayed via the electronic notice of intent with the DEC. We have our wetland validation maps that have been updated to the DEC. So we've basically given the DEC everything that they have asked for.
Okay. Jim?
So I had a couple of comments on a few things, but mainly what it all comes back to is that I think most of this is kind of contingent upon the DEC approval. And getting that DEC approval, without that, you know, this doesn't go very far, at least the way it is proposed today. So it's all contingent on that. You know, Jordan said that the new driveway details are in there for each of the driveways. Still need to make sure, you know, DEC with their permit, to the extent needed. And then Bob Wyant and the town engineering consultant are all okay with those. Just get those boxes checked. Duchess County Health Department for water septic. And then, you know, the planning board going through, you know, the four steps of the conservation subdivision regulations and making secret determination. But again, we can't really do most of that or really any of it till we know the DEC has, has kind of approved that permit. Because everything to, the access to the lots is contingent upon that. Really can't even go through the four step process until we know we can get to the lots.
We do, have we forwarded any changes to CPL for their review?
I think they would have been informed of this. I haven't received anything from them, but I again, will check in with CPL on this application as well. See where we stand there.
Planning board members, comments, questions? Jim, is there anyone from the public here?
So please raise your hand or turn on your screen. Brian?
Just a question about that new plan with the water. You know, just visually looking at the driveway going to lot four with the grade, like if you match the grading up to the water flow. It's a pretty steep hill that drains down towards our property. And, and some of those arrows, while all pointing to the landsman kill, kind of disregard the wetlands to the north of the driveway. Like the, the ma, the flag lot driveway. Where that flag lot comes onto the main property, there's a stream there flowing into the wetland. So again, I, I mean, I get that everything wants to go towards the landsman kill, but I think that there's maybe oversimplifying the, the plan there. But just a, you know, just kind of re, re reminding the planning board in our last letter from the lawyer. We had, we had made a proposal to Alderkill to kind of trade off entrance into the flag lot. To kind of avoid the DEC problem down there for moving the driveway to lot four. You know, again, there was never any kind of further discussion about it. But I do think that's a reasonable request. I think it's reasonable, you know, for our quality of life. I think it's reasonable to not destroy wetlands. Now that the driveway is kind of marked, there's pink flags that mark the driveway. I've counted over 60 trees that will be destroyed. A lot of them are, are, are old growth trees along our property line. So it's concerning for us, for our quality of life, for, for, you know, the, the nature that we enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? So Jim, so Joey Lee, yes?
Hi there, Joe Wheelie on Buttonwood Lane. Yes, I would, I would also just encourage all the planning board members to come out and look at, look at where the proposed driveway is running through the swamp area there. And the, the scale of the trees and size of the trees that this is going to need to take down, as well as how far into the swamp. The, the concrete block retaining wall is going to extend and, and what that'll look like. Because it's, it's pretty dramatic, cut onto the Buttonwood Lane here. So appreciate everybody on the planning board looking at this before you vote on it, please.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else? All right, I think we'll be, as we know, we're awaiting DEC. Jim, when do you suggest we continue this too? Are we likely to hear from DEC soon or?
We are. Jordan seems to think so. I don't know. I really don't have recognition.
They suggest, they said a couple of days. Literally, they said that, so we'll see.
When would you like to continue the public hearing too? Gretchen, how many do we already have on July, on June 6th?
Uh, hang on. Four that I can count off the top of my head.
And you, that includes.
And then we're gonna.
That includes Brindle Valley?
Yes.
And what else were you gonna say?
And if Red Wing gets continued. And if Red Wing gets continued, that's another one that may go on that night or go on to July, depending. So I'm just throwing that out there as, you know, that would be another. Possibility.
And do you know yet how many new applications will be entertaining on the sixth?
All four slots are open. Actually, I shouldn't say that. Two of them have already been filled, so.
Planning Board members, what is your preference? You have two options, I think, to continue it to the sixth of June or to continue it to the fifth of July.
I'd say go to the sixth.
I'd second that to the sixth.
That's the sixth of June.
Of June.
All right, just, you want to consider that a motion in a second?
Yes.
All those in favor? Opposed, any extensions? Okay, thank you, everyone. Last up, before we get to the real order of business tonight, is the Red Wing. Two, eight, White Schoolhouse Road Mining Scale and Scale House Driveway Site Plan and Special Use.
And Melody, I'm recusing from participating as a planning board member with this one.
Okay. Thank you, Michael, for reminding us of that. So we are opening this public hearing, but Jim, I would ask you to. Go over the letter we received today. And was it circulated? I believe it was circulated to planning board members.
Yeah, I believe it was circulated. I don't know that I was prepared to go over it in detail, Melody, but I think just to kind of summarize, we got a. Received a letter from the applicant's attorney stating that they, I think in general, I think it's fair to say. Don't agree necessarily with the way that we are pursuing our review of this application. They still state that they don't think they need permits from the town to do this. And they were essentially asking the planning board only take a look at driveway, maybe it was a portion of the driveway. Anyway, my response to the fact I got the letter today is that I do believe the planning board needs to have. Planning Board Legal Counsel take a look at it and advise us on the next steps. I don't have any recommendations. I can't advise you on that. I don't think we've had adequate time for that. Obviously, we just got it today. I don't know if John's had time to look at it, but regardless, we need some time to take a look at it. That's not. You know, reasonable, obviously, to expect that that will be turned around in a couple hours for this discussion, so. My recommendation, we can open the public hearing and take public comments, obviously, and have any discussion you want. But obviously, this is going to need to be continued, and that specific issue needs to be looked at by John. And then provide, you know, his thoughts on exactly how to proceed.
Correct.
That's really all I have.
Yeah, that's really all, that's all we can say tonight. I mean, this obviously came in today. And I saw John shaking his head that he obviously hasn't had any opportunity to even really look at it. John, is there anything you'd like to add?
Not really. I was in meetings most of the afternoon today, so I actually haven't even laid eyes on that letter yet.
We don't. Like I say, it came today. I think everyone understands that. So we're going to need time to do that before the next meeting. So obviously, it'll be continued to. Was it June sixth, I guess?
At the earliest. Okay, um, so I would, it is a public hearing, and I will open it up to any members of the public. Who wish to comment on this application?
If you'd like to speak, just please raise your hand and let us know. Not seeing anyone, Melody.
All right.
Sorry, go ahead. Just to say, give it a kind of last call.
If there's no one here to, from the public to ask any questions, I guess we're at the point of continuing. John. Do you feel that continuing it to June sixth is sufficient time?
No, I like it. No, I would like it continued to the July meeting, please.
So at the request of our attorney, may I have a motion to continue the public hearing to July fifth?
Show move, Craig.
All those in favor? Opposed, extensions, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. I know it was a long meeting. I appreciate your bearing with us and your patience. So now I'll turn it back to John and Jim to take us through Grassmere.
Everyone want to jump right into this, or do you want to, do you want a couple of minutes? This might take a little bit. Does everyone want to get a quick two minute break or something, or are we good to go?
We're good to go.
Okay. All right.
Do we need to adjourn the public meeting or?
No, our meeting's still going. We just rearranged agenda items, so we're still going.
This is still part of the public meeting.
Sorry to interrupt. Is there any way to make the font a little bit bigger so that we can read it?
Yep, I will be when I get to the next element that we're reviewing tonight.
Thank you.
So I think, hopefully, everyone has a copy of the part one in front of them, and if not, I guess I'll. I'm going to be doing a lot of reading tonight, so hopefully they don't get tired of hearing my voice. What we need to do is, we mentioned about two hours, two and a half hours ago, is we need to go through this part two line by line. Answering these questions, and really, it is for you as planning board members to let me know. Kind of what you think, whether or not we're looking at no or small impact or moderate to large impact for each of these elements. And each of these is addressed, at least for the purposes of doing this document, through the answers in the part one that were given to us by the applicant. So I guess without further ado, if everyone is here. We'll just get right into it. So first element, we're doing impact on land. Will the proposed action? Or the proposed action may involve construction on physical alteration of the land surface and the proposed site. One A, proposed action may involve construction on land where depth of the water table is less than three feet. What, what's that?
No, it will not.
Well, yeah, so I was gonna say, so for A, if you look at three D, the answer is exactly is. E two D, it's what Edna said. The answer is no.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you put the document you're looking at on the screen?
Well, here's the fun point. I can only put up one document at a time, so I can do that. I'm going to be flipping back and forth between them, so.
Right now, you simply have the meeting agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on a second.
Thank you so much.
Apologize, hold on. There, do I have the blank part two up right now? Okay, sorry, that's what I intended to put up, so that everyone will be able to see the answers as we go through this. So one A is answered by section E two D. E two D on the applicant's. Application was the average depth of water table on the project site is greater than 10 feet. So the question is, is it no small impact or moderate to large impact?
No.
I'd say no. Proposed action may involve construction on slopes 15% or greater. That's E two F. 15% or greater is 11% of the site.
So it will not.
Proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or within five feet of the existing ground surface. That is E two A. The depth of bedrock is greater than 10 feet. Again, I know the answers, but you guys are really supposed to answer these for me, so.
Well, we're trying to. It's hard to know what the format should be here, Jim.
Yeah, well.
Do you just want us to call it out? I mean, how do you want to do this?
I mean, that's typically how we did it, but last time, the last time we did this was easier, because last time we did it when we were a person, so it's. Different here on Zoom, but yeah, just kind of call it out. It's kind of what we're looking for, just general consensus. If someone disagrees with the first thing that's said, then we can have a discussion on it, I guess.
Okay.
D, the action may involve the excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material that's found in D two A. Answer to that is no. And I just want to read where the answer to that is, so we get it on the record. The applicant did answer that is no. Proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. And the answer to that is yes, it was proposed over 24 months. So the question is, is that a small, no or small impact or moderate to large impact? No wrong answers.
So, so it's really, you're talking about the length of time here, not any aspect.
Yeah, I would think if it were blocking roadways, you know, if it was a type of construction project that was particularly intrusive. That may indicate a moderate to large impact. Am I right in that?
I would agree with that.
Certainly, that could be part of it, absolutely.
And it seems like they're a little more self-contained than that, so that would be a small impact.
I agree with that.
I think that's fair.
Anyone else?
Sounds good.
Not hearing any dissent, so we'll go with that. All right, proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal. D two E talks about how they will be disturbing more than one acre. And create stormwater runoff either from new point sources or non-point sources. They are looking at creating impervious surface. Of 9.7 acres over a 250 acre site. There will be stormwater discharge from the site and on the site, onsite stormwater treatment practices. With treated outflow to the existing onsite streams and wetlands will be utilized. Stormwater runoff will not flow to adjacent properties. And the proposed plan will minimize impervious surfaces, use previous materials, and collect or reuse stormwater.
I think it's a no or small.
I agree.
And then the proposed action is or may be located within a coastal has erosion hazard area. I did take a look into this. The hazard area is within 1,000 feet of a coastal management program. The only coastal management program, I believe, if it is there, and I think it is Hudson River, so we are well outside that.
So no.
I mean, no.
Any other impacts in your opinion on impact on land? If not, then is it fair for me to say the impact on land in the planning board's estimation is a no? There will be no significant or no moderate or large impact, I should say, on the impact on land. All right, so we'll check the big box. Moving on. Impact on geological features. E two G. Says that there are no geologic features on the project site, no unique geologic features on the project site.
Right, I think that's just a no.
Yeah, as long as no one else disagrees. The proposed action may affect or is adjacent to a geologic feature listed as a registered national landmark. It's now free to see. And the answer to that again by applicant is no. Any other thoughts anyone have on geologic features? If not, we can go to that one as a no.
Okay, I'm sorry, before we move on. Is there a separate provision for view sheds? And. Scenic. Scenic road impacts.
That will come up later.
We do have aesthetic, aesthetic resources.
Yeah, okay.
And historical geological resources that we will get to.
This is strictly geologic.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
All right, so we'll go with no on this one unless they hear otherwise.
Go for it.
Moving right along. Impact on surface water. Proposed action may create a new water body.
Actually, is, that is true, I believe, right, for the wastewater project?
Yeah, they're going to do rain gardens of some sort for stormwater disposal.
They're doing a constructed wetland also as the receiving, primary receiving area from the wastewater.
Right, that's what I was saying.
Yeah.
I agree. That's what I've seen in the plans. But their response is actually that the answer would be no here, that they're not creating a new water body. So I think, based on that for D two B, we need to look into that and get some more information. That sounds right.
Probably just thinking of surface water. When they ask this question.
Yeah, I think, I think it seems to me somewhat related to what the definition of a water body is. But I, but I agree that we need more information. I mean, as we all have commented tonight, for tonight, I would. Put it at moderate to large impact may occur and then ask for more detailed information.
This is referring to surface water, right, just to clarify?
Yeah.
I would think so.
Can I just read you something from the EAF workbook on this that? It may not answer the question for tonight, but it may add for your information going forward. It says, new water bodies can be created by damming streams and rivers, channeling water from wetlands or even from surface runoff. By grading and land shaping activities that create new basins for water to collect in. Some new water bodies use groundwater sources such as springs. Creation of ponds, lakes, and reservoirs or other land alterations that create new water bodies are all activities that could have impacts. So that just gives you some insight. So if there are drainage basins or. Any, any standing water that's going to be created needs to be considered by the board.
So I know we're not taking public comment during this. It's a planning board work session, but Nick did just chat in the chat box to me that it's B because. They're increasing the areas of these, not creating new ones. But. So it doesn't a big deal. We're not doing anything per se that has a timeline issue or anything with any of this, but we can, we can clarify that.
Okay, and also, Jim, if I may, there's a little bit of help on that issue in the EAF workbook. Which says that increasing or decreasing the surface area of water bodies by over 10% or more than 10 acres. Means it is more likely that an adverse impacts to water quality. Water quantity or quality aquatic ecosystems and downstream or upstream locations could occur. So that 10% is a number that you will need to be looking at.
Yep. And thank you for going into the workbook, John. I can only toggle between so many documents here at once. So I appreciate the help assistance. All right, we'll come back to that one. At a later date. So three B, the proposed action may result in an increase or decrease of over 10%. Oh, this is what Nick was saying, what could be, or more than 10 acre increase or decrease the surface area of any water body, which is D two B. Which says the answer is no, the proposed action when approaching the town regulated wetland buffers, but there'll be no impacts existing wetland water bodies shoreline or beach. So the applicant has said that there will be no increase or decrease in size. I'm sorry, yeah. Of 10% or more.
Okay.
With a no.
That's a no.
Yep. Again, this is based on the information we're given, and if we have questions, we can, we can ask for more information, and. We know the grass house did provide a detailed write-up that goes along with this, that may have some of these questions answered. If we need to go back to later. Proposed action may involve dredging more than 100 cubic yards of material from a wetland or water body. D two A, the answer to that from the applicant was no. Proposed action may involve construction within or joining a freshwater or tidal wetland or in the better banks, any other water body. The answer to that was. Yes, the project contains wetlands or other water bodies. Wetlands water bodies do join the site. There are wetlands and water bodies within or joining the project site. The approximate size of the wetlands are 10 acres. None of the water bodies are water quality impaired. And that was the answer to that.
So is this, is this about the foundations for the cottages in the, in the wetland buffer? Is that what this is about here?
Well, the seeker form isn't specific to that, right? It's a generic, general form for all type one reviews, so. We kind of have to analyze it within the, you know, perspective that you have on the project, I think.
Comparing the original to, the original approved to where we are today, correct?
Well, yep, that is what, yeah, John reminded us that again, we are looking at that comparison, but again, basing it on the information we've given.
So it's no or small, right?
I think that sounds very fair to me. Again, we'll go with the first answer unless someone speaks up and says otherwise. So we do it on Zoom. Proposed action may create turbidity in a water body, either from upland erosion runoff or by disturbing bottom sediment. Proposed action may create turbidity in a water body either from up, upland erosion runoff or by disturbing bottom sediments.
I think that's no, right?
D two, yep, I just want to again, just go through the answer from the applicant, the D two A was no. And D two H, I'm not necessarily going to go through all these all the time. D two H was no as well. So I think the answer to that would be no.
Where are you? Are you an F?
Yeah, we're on E, no, we're still on E, just went through E, saying the answer to that one is no.
Good.
The proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes for withdrawal of water from surface water, D two C.
That's no.
The answer to that is no, that's correct. The proposed action may include construction of one or more outfalls for discharge of wastewater to surface water, D two D. The answer to that is yes, it is a commercial type of development.
I think that's where we need more information to know.
No, I'm sorry, D two D, wrong one. Okay, I'm sorry, the answer is yes, the anticipated, I was on the wrong one, anticipated liquid waste generation per day is 45,000 gallons. It will be dealt with in a typical residential, commercial, sanitary waste manner, and the proposed action is not using any public wastewater treatment facilities.
So that's, my sense is that's moderate to large, but we need more information.
They're gonna have the, they're gonna have the onsite wastewater treatment system, which will be constructed and discharged to create a wetland flowing through this, an onsite tributary to the landsman kill. The waste will be collected, treated and liquid discharged, there's no capture, recycling or reuse proposed for the project.
Okay, does that conflict with three B?
It would seem to potentially.
No, I'm sorry, three A, where it said it doesn't create a new water body.
Right, and we discussed the fact that we thought that there would be a new one created, so that's why I think, Craig, we're gonna ask a question, look into that a little further, we'll just clarify that.
All right. And this would also be subject to like Speedy's permit and all that, right?
Oh, certainly, yeah, this, this is the planning board seeker review.
Okay.
But yeah, absolutely, this, this has nothing to do directly with permitting per se, this is the planning board, planning review, secret analysis.
So what do you think the answer to that one is, to G?
Well, can I, can I give you some information from the workbook that may or may not be helpful on this question? It says that if there's an outfall, there's only a small impact where discharge is low, low flow, so there is no change to bottom sediment, water temperatures or changes in water chemistry or turbidity. Moderate, an example of a moderate to large impact would be discharge is moderate to high flow in volume and it will likely result in scouring of bottom sediments, changes in water temperatures, changes in water chemistry and increases in turbidity.
So we need more information.
Yeah, wouldn't, but also 45,000 gallons sounds like a lot, but I, maybe if you, you know, break it down by 24 hours, it ends up being, you know, not enough to require some sort of big discharge structure, you know, like they have at the village water treatment plant, that's like a staged concrete structure.
Right, and the fact that this water is going into a created wetland would indicate that if we're not looking at substantial flow, you know, coming out of the, the, you know, the treatment plant into the wetland, you know, it's gonna be that 45,000 gallons, but the, the whole intent of these created wetlands is to take that water, cool it off, if it is, does happen to be warm and get it down to the natural state, you know, to the extent that it can be, coming out of that system. Before then, it goes, you know, anywhere else, so generally speaking, the intent would be that that wetland is supposed to bring that water back to being essentially what it, what it would be, you know, with any other water on site. Does that necessarily answer the question with, with data? No, but that would be my, my assumption of how this works, and again.
I'm assuming that, that, you know, it'll be wonderful from what I understand, the water that comes out of that thing is going to be drinkable, but I still think until we have information, we don't have enough information to know.
Good. So we'll get more info for G, and again, it may be that we have it, we just don't have it based on the part one we're reviewing today. Doesn't mean it isn't there, and if it isn't, we certainly get it. So we'll work on that, all right, moving on to H, proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or the degradation of receiving water bodies, I think we already covered that one with G above, we just need a little more information to be sure, does that sound right?
Yeah.
I believe the same would then also hold for I.
Right.
All right, J, proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in or around a water body. Let's see, D two Q. Um, they are not proposing to use any pesticides during construction or operation, so the answer to that would be no. Proposed action may require the construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities, well, we know the answer to that is yes. I don't know, John, if you have any guidance in the workbook on D one A or D two, but let's see what we have here.
I'm, I'm looking.
D one A, just talks about the fact that it's a, the type of use, the commercial hospitality lodging. D two D. Again, it's talking about the generation of liquid wastes, so the answer to this is yes, the question is whether or not you consider it to be small impact or moderate to large.
And, and so I think you need more information, just goes along with the whole wastewater situation.
Let me, let me tell you what the workbook is giving as examples for small impact and moderate to large impact here. Uh, exit, the example of a small impact would be wastewater treatment systems that discharge less than 1,000 gallons per day to groundwater and that have no industrial or other non-sewage wastes. An example, examples of moderate to large impact would be constructing or connecting to an outlet or pipe that discharges more than 1,000 gallons per day of sewage only waste to groundwater. Uh, constructing or connecting to an outlet pipe that discharges industrial or other non-sewage wastes to groundwater. Constructing or connecting to an outlet pipe that discharges wastewater into any surface water and constructing or operating a disposal system such as a sewage treatment plant. So this is potentially a moderate to large impact based on those examples. And then the only caveat I would note to that again is to, we're again examining the delta between what was examined already under the GEIS and versus what's being proposed now.
Good point. Well, I'll check that as moderate, but we'll look for more info on that, and then again, John, I think with these questions, we have more information, we're definitely gonna be looking at that, the delta, as you said, between the two. See how that plays into, in all this. All right, so we have a couple of questions there, we'll come back to those. John, I'll do some brief search, if anyone wants to discuss now related to surface water, we haven't covered.
Did we say no to other impacts?
Essentially, yeah, unless, we've been saying no to other.
Yeah, in, in, in the workbook on this, they're saying there may be other impacts identified by the reviewing agency that are not addressed by the questions above. Some examples of other impacts related to surface water may be altering or disrupt, disrupting natural flow of current, altering the depth of a body of water, changing the natural bottom composition, disturbing bottom materials that would release sequestered pollutants, impacts on surface waters that may be used for drinking water. I'm not sure any of those apply in this instance, but you know the file better than I do.
I think that'd be good. I'll, I'll go through the workbook and look at all the other categories and just see if any of this pertains as well, since we don't have other questions to answer.
Yep.
Do any of these disposal sites involve bernal pools? Areas of wetlands that are dry during some times of the year and wet during others, because that's one of the things that could upset the balance of those features if they're constantly being flooded with water the year round, where typically they would only be wet in the springtime.
That's a good question.
That is a good detailed question, I don't have the answer to off the top of my head, Craig, so I noted that, took a look.
Yeah, and I don't even know if the laws are, you know, written around that. But it's a consideration.
It's a very good question.
All right. There are any others, we'll move on to groundwater. Proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer. I actually believe unless I'm mistaken, everything they're using is village water.
Yeah.
Right, and which, because I think we can just say no to this one right off the top unless anyone else has issue, I don't think we have to go through these.
I agree, I agree.
Right, is that, is that true for non-drinking water, Jim?
There might be a well or two that's being used for irrigation.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's something to check on, because some, I know that's, sometimes, sometimes those numbers can be significant.
That would be four A.
D two C, let me take a quick look here, that's a good point. The drum back water service. Public water supply will be used.
I don't remember any comments about irrigation and all that stuff you had us read.
Yeah. Yeah, also, I think that's the kind of thing that the Board of Health frowns on, because there's always the prospect that somebody's, you know, gonna drink out of the hose. But are they, are they proposing anything that's geothermal that would require a well?
I don't think so.
I would say at this point, just give them my quick review of a couple of things here. Why don't we go with no, I will double check to see if there are any wells, as John suggested. And then we can revisit this, because we do need to revisit some of these anyway, it's not that we're finishing this tonight, but we can come back to it.
Jim, if they were using wells for irrigation, wouldn't they have to basically duplicate the entire plumbing system on the site? So as not to mix potable water with the, with the well water for irrigation, so I don't think we've seen any such dual infrastructure system in any of the plans that we've received that would suggest they're doing that.
No, I, I don't think we have, Michael, that's why I said no right off the top, but I do want to double check, it's a good question, and again, since we're not gonna complete this in full tonight, it's, I've got time to double check, just make sure we're, we're getting it right.
They, this is not apples to apples, but there was some verbiage in the documents you sent over about using existing water on the property for fire maintenance and for the
That's right.
Yeah. So I don't know if that's also would be used for irrigation, there was, I didn't see anything about irrigation in any of the stuff you sent over though.
Yeah, I, I know they've got, I believe they have public water already, they're just increasing the size of the pipes, again, we'll, we'll get clarification on that, let me, let me double check that. But again, since we'll be coming back to this, we can we can do that next time. All right. Impact on flooding, proposed action may result in development in a designated floodway. Three two I, it is not in a designated floodway according to the paperwork we have, so no or small impact. Proposed action may result in development within a 100-year floodplain. It is not within a 100-year floodplain according to the paperwork. Therefore, it would not be within a 500-year floodplain, so it would be outside the 100-year. The proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns. Sorry, I'm just flipping on my paperwork here. D two B. Uh, the answer to that by applicant. Will the proposed action cause or result in the alteration of increase, decrease in size of or encroachment into any existing wetland, water body, shoreline, beach or adjacent area, the answer is no. Proposed action will approach in time regulated wetland buffer areas, but no impacts the existing wetland, water body, shoreline or beach. And then D two E. Will the proposed action disturb more than one acre and create stormwater runoff either from new point sources or non-point sources, the answer was yes, we went through this earlier. 9.7 acres of impervious surface will be there on a 250 acre parcel with existing stormwater discharge from the site, onsite, none of which will go to adjacent properties, and they are using other elements for like impervious pavements, so will the action result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns? That's a maybe a little difficult to
I think it's go ahead.
I'd say it's on the small impact, that it's less than 5% of the entire property, I mean, I think the answer is yes, but
It's small.
It's small.
Also compared to the earlier proposals, which are had a great deal more structures, buildings, lodging units, it's probably less than what was originally proposed and approved under the original seeker finding, given what they're proposing now.
Yeah. I agree. Just for everyone's knowledge, Nick did put in the chat again, there's no irrigation, no geothermal, just so you're aware, but again, we'll check those boxes on the next one. Um.
But as Joe pointed out, they did say that they plan to use onsite water for fire prevention.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get that clarified, again, we're gonna come back to a couple of these later on, so I'm not, not concerned about not addressing that exactly today. Proposed action may change floodwater flows to contribute to flooding, there are no flooding issues on this property. Uh, if there's a dam located on the site, is the dam needed to repair or upgrade, I don't think there is one.
Actually, there are, Jim, there are a couple of those ponds that exist along where some of the cabins are being built now. Those are, those are created.
Okay, the answer in the, in the documentation was no. But you think there's some there, so we will double check.
Years ago, we went through quite a bit with Mr. Mensch, because he had just had someone come in with a bulldozer and just dam up, make a dam to make another pond or two there, and we had to have an engineer go in and find out exactly what he used to see if they're even safe. And that was what, 10, 15 years ago, something like that?
Yeah.
We'll take a look at F and we'll get that clarified.
Can, Jim, can I just tell you, there's a piece in the workbook in terms of mod, moderate to large impact? If a dam is present or proposed, that is classified as a hazard class B or C, or if it is currently a class A, but parts of the project will be built downstream from the dam such that its hazard class could be raised and the dam will have to be upgraded, there would be a moderate to large impact, so we may have to look at the grading for the dam that Michael's discussing.
Yep. Confirm there, and then look at the details.
Jim, I, I just want a quick question, if, if we answer no for one, two, three, four, five out of six items, seven items, is it still no up above?
Well, we, we're supposed to go through each of these individually, unless we know right up front, there's no issue like we think there is with water. But again, this is, this is a document for the planning board to address based on what you think, you see in the documentation, excuse me, and your knowledge of the project. You know, so right now, again, because I think we have a few others we need to check on, I don't think it hurts anything to just double check letter F here and go back through it, if this is the only one, we wanted to clear this up tonight, and maybe dig in a little deeper, but we're gonna do, take another shot at a couple of these. And again, I don't think it's gonna slow anything down in terms of the process.
Relative, relative. Go ahead.
I just want to add that, you know, the DEC tells us that these, these questions are not designed to be exhaustive. If there are other impacts that you know about, that's what the other impacts category is for, then, you know, they're relying on the planning board to use its own initiative to be able to issue spot, so and these are not, it's not really a, a balance. and these are not, it's not really a balancing test as a result. So any moderate to large impact that gets identified potentially needs to be addressed on part three of the EAF.
And I'm confident we'll be able to answer these questions. It's just that a few of these, I think we just need to dig a little deeper.
And we'll get to that. Come, that's not uncommon.
Right, absolutely. Any other questions on flooding?
No.
Yeah, and five, that will be straightforward. Either there are dams and we'll get the details on the condition of those if they're there. All right. I don't know, John, if you want to view other impacts for flooding, if we'll just move on since flooding isn't really an issue on the property per se. Think we can probably about impacts on air.
I agree.
Okay. Impacts on air. Those that actually may include the state regulated air emission source. Most of this, that's majority of this refers back to D two G. D two G. States, will any air emission sources named in DF two above require state air registration, air facility permit or federal clean air act title four or title five permit? The answer from the applicant is no. So not requiring that for D two G answers pretty much everything under D two G here. These these numbers are no's.
Right.
Question here about methane, D two H. The answer to that is no. Due to F and G proposed actually require state air registration or produce emissions attempts five. D two F, D two G. Just double check that. So for this one, we're talking about may produce emissions rates, total contaminants makes each five pounds an hour include heat source capable reducing by 10 million BTUs per hour. D two F. Yeah, D two F says, does the proposed action include or will it include, will it use onsite one or more sources of air emissions, including fuel combustion, waste incineration or other processes or operations? The answer is yes. The typical sources, the mobile source is typical automotive traffic to support guests. The stationary source would be onsite generators for construction and typical construction emissions. So the question would then be does it produce emissions at a rate totaling? What is required under this? And we don't have an absolute number. So just looking, it's not answered in there either. Maybe I just need to get a little more information on this one. On C. Reach 50% of thresholds A through C above. Again, we'll double check on that one for more info. I think because they're talking about generators and typical automotive traffic and not requiring state air registration permits and things probably okay there, but we will come back to that. D two S.
Jim, real quick, is the impact on air short term or long term in this? I think.
Well, the impact's based on needing a, you know, a state air permit and, you know, especially up in A, we're talking about, you know, tons per year of carbon dioxide, nitrous oxide thing. That would be a continuous request or question, I should say in A. These other ones, it's it's not entirely clear necessarily. Again, it might be in the workbook. But I think I need to just double check a few things on C and D. We'll just confirm those to see if they are short term or long term or otherwise. D two S. Does the proposed action include construction modification solid waste management facility? The answer is no. I'll double check on E as well. I think we're okay on that one. So I think we need a little more information. I see that we confirm a little information on C, D and E. To be sure that we can check those boxes.
And that's all based on automobiles and maybe gas generator propane generators?
Well, based based on the information we're provided for letter C, that that's what we were provided is is being, you know, answering the questions here. We didn't really have details under D two G or D two S that I think absolutely explain what's going on here in E. But again, as John said, it's not always a an absolute. Sometimes it's a little fuzzy. This is again, is a general form intended to cover all sorts of type one projects. Which is why I say I don't have the exact answer, but probably okay, given the information we've been provided. But again, since we're going to be coming back to this, just let me double check and I'll have full place some answers for the next time we go through this. And the next time we go through this won't take as long as we have handfuls to go through. Hopefully. Any questions on impacts on air? All right. Getting there. Impact on plants. Those action may result in the loss of flora or fauna. The action may cause reduction in the population or loss of individuals. Any threatened or endangered species is listed by New York State or the federal government that use the site or found on over or near the site as an E two O. And the answer to that is, does the project site contain any species of plant or animal that is listed by the federal government or New York State as endangered or threatened? Or contain areas identified as habitat for danger to threaten species? The answer is yes. The northern long ear bat is there. That's pretty common in the town of Bryant Beck. Does it contain any plant or animal species that of special concern? The answer is no. And it doesn't state that there will be any issues related to that.
So.
So it does have. I'm sorry, go ahead, Edna.
I was just wondering then therefore what that seems ambiguous.
So based on my knowledge and John can help me out here a little bit. You've done some of this, the the northern long eared bat has requirements developers have to deal with it with its its mating seasons and other things. They developers need to work around the sensitive seasons for the northern long eared bat. Since it wasn't stated that there were any issues related to that, they weren't taking down any of its habitat, just identifying that it is there. I don't see any issues in this specifically related to that. But again, I can, we can double check that and just make sure that they do have a plan to address that and they're planning to remove any habitat.
I know that at the other site at around Fern Cliff, they talked specifically about taking down the shag bar hickory trees only during a certain time of the year because of the nesting habits of the, I don't know if it was the long eared bat. But they nest under the little flakes in the bark, so they can only take them down during certain times. I don't know if they've identified any specific shag bar hickory trees for removal.
Yeah, we'll have to see. The shag bar hickory might be a habitat for the Indiana bat, which is also threatened.
I know they've, the applicants identified the trees they do plan to remove. So that information should be pretty easy to identify.
Okay, yeah. And there is, there is helpful guidance in the workbook again on on this question. I don't know whether you want me to bother to read that now or whether, Jimmy, you want to look into that further.
I think, John, just based on the remaining questions on here. And where, you know. Yeah, I guess why don't you go through it? I think for the next two C and D, we're going to have to get more info. I think A through D kind of all tie together.
Okay, this is, this isn't long, but it just gives it gives some context. So there's a framework for thinking about it. So the examples that are given for small impacts are the following circumstances. Rare or threatened species are found near or on adjacent parcels, but there's no habitat to be found on the project site. Rare or threatened species or their habitats are found on the site, but construction or opera or operation activities will avoid impairment of their habitats and not impair the animal's ability to use the site. Rare and threatened species or their habitats are found on the site. Some construction or operation activities will remove or impair a small portion of the habitat. But mitigation is planned to create or permanently protect remaining or other critical areas for those species. Species are found traveling through or flying over the project site and the activities are such that these travel patterns will not be disrupted. Important travel corridors are identified and all natural vegetation is protected to allow wildlife travel. And then the following circumstances are cited as examples of moderate to large impacts. Large portions of habitats known to be used by threatened and endangered species will be removed, including the removal of vegetation, cutting dead trees down, grading cliffs or fragmenting large areas of potential habitats to create islands of remaining habitat. Fencing or walls will be constructed around the property, limiting wildlife access to the site, even though the habitat may remain. And specific features of importance to the threatened or endangered species will be destroyed such as grasslands, dead trees, riffle and pool areas in the stream, removal of all underbrush or removal of prime nesting trees or winter habitats.
Thanks, John. So I will just clarify A through D. Have more information for everyone next time. So I think that information is readily available in some more detailed documentation. Or if not, we'll get it. Moving on then to E, proposed action may diminish the capacity of a registered national, national natural landmark to support the biologic community. It was established to protect. The answer to that is no, based on the applicant's information. There is no natural, national, natural landmark on the property. The next one, the proposed action may result in removal of or ground disturbance in any portion of a designated significant natural community. The answer to that again, from the applicant's documentation is no. Proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting breeding, foraging or overwintering habitat for the predominant species that occupy the project site. Need to answer to that is that the site predominantly has typical woodland creatures and typical meadow, land flora and fauna. I'll look into that one as well. Just to clarify. Letter H, the proposed action requires a conversion to more than 10 acres of forest, grassland or other regionally or locally important habitat. There will be a reduction of six and a half acres of forested land. Five acres of agricultural land. So that would be a total of the reduction of 11 and a half acres of forested and agricultural land. Those would be the two reductions on the site. Forest, grassland or regional local important habitat. So I don't know, John, do we count agricultural as grassland or other regionally or locally important habitat? Or we just be looking at forest, in which case it's under the 10 acres listed here.
Looking, hang on. Thanks. Okay, so what what they're, the the examples that the workbook's providing here for small impact. The circumstances that are provided are if a very small portion of a very large site is disrupted and converted to another land use. These are small impacts. For example, a one acre conversion may have a small impact when the remaining 300 acres of grassland still exists. If one to 10 acres are disrupted and converted, impacts may be small if there are similar remaining lands that are of significant size or it is a highly disturbed site to begin with. The loss does not fragment significant habitats. The new land use is not growth inducing so that over time more of the habitat will not be lost to subsequent development. And some land will be converted, but the remaining land is still intact and significant size. And of significant size and the applicant will place a conservation easement on the remainder of the land to protect it. And then the following examples are provided for moderate to large impacts. A very large proportion or the entire site is disrupted and converted to another land use. More than 10 acres are disturbed and converted. The loss creates a fragmented habitat. The loss removes small but critical areas such as vernal pools and their surrounding uplands that are required for amphibian breeding. Critical vegetation known for creating important fish breeding sites will be removed. And critical features known to be important to species will be removed.
Sounds like a small impact.
I was going to leave that way, Edna, but open to comments from others.
I think small is the proper description.
Okay. All right. Not hearing any sense on that. We'll move on to the next one. The proposed action involves use herbicides or pesticides. We already know the answer to that was no. So we can answer that one. Any other thoughts from anyone on impact on plants and animals? I have I have five areas. I'm just going to get some additional information on, but I do believe that that's available. All right. Moving on, impact on agricultural resources, number eight. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources. Number one, the action may impact soil classified within soil group one through four of the New York State land classification system. I can tell you, I did look this up this morning and there is one soil group that is within the group one through four land classification system. It is the haven soil and to see, let me see if we have the number up. It accounts for 22% of the soil on the project site. Now, that's not to say 22% is going to be disturbed, just accounts for 22% of the soil on the site. So so it does impact one so group, one classification as far as I can tell.
Could I just ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Looking at this as the potential supplemental environmental investing sort of a thing here. Are we supposed to just be identifying potential problems on size right across the board or in terms of relationship with what was done before? Or do we identify across the board and then in part three, look to see whether or not the impact is you know, compared to what the impacts identified were in the original EAF.
I think, Michael, we're really just looking for in this exercise for the supplemental, we're just looking at the differences between the previous iteration of the project and the currently proposed site plan.
Would it? And I know this is a little late to ask this. It would have helped if we had part one of the original and part two of the original that was then, you know, signed off on by the planning board at that time to see whether or not the, you know, what they considered small, what they considered large and in part three, what they consider was mitigated was you know, just, I don't know how else we know how to compare.
Well, the applicant did provide a technical memo that actually reached back to the previous environmental review and then cited, I think, elements of the finding statement from the generic environmental impact statement. So I think that's what our baseline is. And that the finding statement, I think, was pretty liberally quoted in the memo that was provided by the applicant. But you know, we might want to look back at that or take a look, you know, at the FEAF from the first project, you know, it wouldn't be that hard to dig that up and take a look at it as part of the review that you're doing now, just to add some context.
So John, I guess, you know, I wish we admitted, talked about the symbol earlier, but if, if that is the case, I mean, we can't ask the planning board to understand what was in that, you know, compared to what we're looking at now. We only have kind of this existing document in front of us, that almost require work by, by me and or by you to really provide kind of a comparison. Do, do we keep going through this? Do we pull back?
I, I, I think we keep going through it. If, if things are identified, there's, there's no harm in raising issues that, you know, from the get-go, if, if you will, as long as we understand that, that will have to be sorted later. So that the judgment that's being made is only on the differences. But we can, we can go through and identify and eliminate, as some things are being eliminated today, and also identify which things require the submission of more information. And then Jim, addition, you can do some additional work to just help the board and, and report back to the board to help them understand what the baseline was at the GEIS and where things stand now. So I think continuing to go through tonight is going to make forward progress and make the next step smaller. Does that make any sense?
I mean, I think maybe it's a general rest, rational generalization, but I do think a lot of these, you know, in that, in that regard are going to be no or small impact maker compared to what was originally proposed, since we are at a much smaller scale projects, the possible exception to that, you know, maybe being a pervious surface, but I think that even is smaller. So, all right, we'll continue on and on cranky, so where?
This is, and this is how, this is just framing what our, our part three has to be anyway. So this is an exercise that we need to go through in any event.
All right.
Okay, so, so there is an impact on a soil group one. Question is, do we consider it no small impact or moderate or large impact? It is 22% of the site, I believe it was, but does it mean that 22% is being disturbed?
Right, so we don't know that.
Yeah.
We need, need more information.
All right.
Yeah, it'd be good to know where that soil occurs in the site and if it's even within areas that they're going to be excavating or filling.
Okay, I'll get some more info. Proposed action may sever cross or otherwise limit access to agricultural land. We know that we are looking at a subdivision here of 250 acres of the north end. It is going to remaining, and I believe it's going to remain agricultural or under its current use. But looking at this from E1A and E1B, they do acknowledge that the land is agricultural, existing farmland. It says, I should say, that existing farmland that is surrounded by wooded areas. Adjacent properties include farmland, some houses, suburban residential areas, some commercial properties are to the northeast. And while there are 96 acres currently of agricultural land, it will go down to 91 after project completion for a change of five, loss of five acres.
So that'd be small impact.
Proposed action may result in excavation or compaction of the soil profile of active agricultural land. Three B. There are 44 acres of highly productive soils present on the site, according to the New York State Agricultural Land Classification Study. That's all that it tells me for this.
Active agricultural land, is it?
Yes.
It is.
Yeah, so again, this says there's 44 acres on site, you know, is it impacting all 44 acres? I guess that's the question I can confirm. Proposed action may irreversibly convert ag land to non-agricultural uses, either more than two and a half acres if located in an ag district or more than 10, if not within an ag district. So.
Seems yes, right?
I believe so. E3A. Let me see if I have a number in here specifically. Yes, it is a designated ag district. I just 20, but it doesn't tell me exactly how many acres are coming out of, well, yeah, it does tell us, right, it's a loss of five acres. Same number. So it is more than two and a half acres in an ag district. Again, the question is, do we consider that to be significant? Or not?
So the workbook, the workbook says if it's more than 2.5 acres, it's likely to be significant.
So we'll check minor to large for now and we'll maybe revisit that one because we will have to, anything that's minor to large, have to look into detail. Proposed action may disrupt or prevent installation of an ag land management system. Any thoughts on that? The same, same answers as we had for the last one. We know there are agricultural lands and we're losing five acres of ag lands on site.
But it's not going to disrupt man installation of an agricultural land management system. I think it's no.
All right. The proposed action may result directly or indirectly in increased development potential or pressure on farmland. Well, we know what's going in. We know that it's, and this is one of the items here that is a country in hospitality, commercial type use.
If there's a, if there is proposed expansion in the future, would that result in increased development potential or pressure on farmland?
I think this is where it gets interesting, as, as John noted, we're comparing it again to the original submission, right? So the submission is less intense than what had been originally proposed and approved. If they come in with another phase, is that, I guess, the, the question would be then, is it less intense still than what was originally approved, if that's what our metric is?
Yeah, interestingly, the, the workbook in, in lists the following, and the second bullet point is germane to Melody's comment, but the following circumstances are identified as as possible moderate to large impacts. Moderate to high residential density that can result in loss of farmland and farming activity. Provision of water and sewer systems as well as road improvements that bring more people and traffic to a farming area. These are growth inducing and will likely negatively impact farms over time. Large commercial employers bring in large structures, intense uses and traffic that could adversely affect farms. And land conversions that increase the price of land may make it harder for farmers to maintain their land due to increased taxes and make it harder to buy new land to expand operations.
I think that horse is already out of the barn.
Small, if any. They're, they're widening the road. But just in one spot for their driveway.
Remember, remember too, that the, the point of identifying moderate to large impacts is the first step toward figuring out mitigation. So seeker requires that the potential adverse impacts be mitigated to the maximum extent practicable. So whatever the impact is on the site, then if it's, if the impact's moderate to large and it's, and you determine on part three that that's significant, then the, the equation shifts to figuring out, well, how can that impact be mitigated?
Yeah, and John, that, that reminds me of something I was going to mention when we had the moderate, you know, checkbox up here, is that just because it's moderate to large does not mean that, you know, a development or proposal can't happen, just means we have to look at it, look at potential mitigation, and if it is significant, and if so, what are we going to do about it? So it, you know, you know, it's, we just answer honestly and, you know, it, it doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, it's going to result in different action or something taking place, which just means we need to look into a little further.
Yeah, and also even a step before that is just because impacts are moderate to large. On part three, we figure out that whether they're significant, because there are sometimes there are impacts that are moderate to large that are not significant because of a variety of factors, some of which can include mitigation that's already been proposed by the applicant or, you know, variety of other circumstances, but it's just that moderate to large designations, you know, setting a scale is just the first step in a continual.
Well, it's kind of hard to argue that this action will not, at least indirectly, cause increased pressure on farmland. Taking away potential farmland.
I agree with that, and that was my point.
Comparative to the original plan that was approved?
But, but it's talking about may result.
Right.
Of the original plan was bigger, may result in having a bigger impact?
I, I, I'm only guessing that the original answer would have been yes as well, moderate to large as well. I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know.
It sounds like this one should be flagged for Jim to take a look at.
Absolutely. Okay.
And then G, not consistently adopted farmland protection plan, we don't have one in the town, so that would be an answer of no.
I don't think the county has one either.
What a county, I'll, I'll talk to you about that later, John, we'll have to go down there. We have enough to talk.
It's a, it says municipal anyway, in the question.
Yeah, that's gonna be my question, okay. All right, any questions on that one? We'll move on to number nine.
Yes.
All right, aesthetic resources, the land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. Number one, proposed action may be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource. So what are you thinking about that? I'll tell you what they said. The answer, the question E3H says, is the project site within five miles of any officially designated publicly accessible federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource? The answer is yes. The identified resource, Mill Road, it's a scenic road, and New York State Route 9 scenic byway. The distance between the project and those two resources is obviously zero miles there on either side of the road. So the question is, sorry, go ahead.
I think it's a small impact.
Okay. Not hearing any others, we will go with that. Sounds good to me. Proposed action may result in obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views. You have the answer for H, those are the two scenic roads, and C2B. The answer here is, is the site proposed within any local or regional special planning districts? Like a boa opportunity area, state or federal designated heritage area watershed management plan? I do actually think we're in the, it's River Valley National Heritage Area. But the question still is, will it result in obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more of those designated views? I, I think the answer is no, unless anyone disagrees.
Right, no.
Proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points seasonally or year round?
Well, it's potentially, it certainly is potentially visible from Route 9. And it will be visible during the winter.
So is that a, do we look at that as a small impact or moderate to large impact?
I, I think the answer to that is related to the screening.
Okay.
I, I think we might feel differently about it also when they start clearing and putting in the south drive access. They have made significant changes to the Route 9 entrance, the brick pillars have been moved forward and spread apart and are, you know, much more prominent. They were kind of hidden down in the woods before. And I think that they said that the Mill Road, that's like a staff access.
No, no, no road is just going to be emergency access, and it's going to have a chain across, no, no vehicular access except for emergency vehicles, and maybe, you know, people walking or bike.
Isn't there a service facility there that is going to be visible from Mill Road?
That's from Route 9.
Right, not from Mill Road.
But more particularly, if you're driving up Route 9, it's very easy this time of year to see through the tree line onto the property and very clearly the stone barn. And so it's been hard for me to imagine what it will look like when all of the other components of this application are built. So I, I do believe that new buildings, new construction, unless properly screened, will be visible, certainly in the off-season from Route 9.
So would you call that a moderate impact melody, it's seasonally?
I would consider it a moderate impact seasonally.
I agree.
I agree. I've never seen the stone barns from Route 9.
I was gonna say the same thing. I was gonna say, I've never seen the stone barns. The only place I could see it is actually towards like Dawes Lane, but it's private land.
I'm actually. If you're coming up Route 9, as I do almost daily, I know exactly where to look and I can look right through the stone bar.
Wow, I come off Africa hook and I never see it, but I all have my eyes peeled.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't from Ackert Hook, you would south of Ackert Hook.
As you're coming into town, it's just after the four lane ends. And there, there's an embankment. Do you guys know the stone, the stone gate that they're talking about restoring at the south?
Right.
There's like, there's, there's a huge stone embankment there, and as that embankment tapers down, if you look, you can, this time of year, you can clearly see the barn and there are big plastic wrapped hay bales.
Exactly. Yep.
And now that I've actually been to the site, I see it all the time.
Is it right by Midnight Lane? I'm like, I'm just looking at a map as we're talking.
No, it's south of Midnight.
South of Midnight. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to take notice to it.
So to be fair, would it be fair to say then, we're looking at a moderate seasonal impact, but a, a no or small impact year round?
Yes.
I guess that makes sense. The situation or activity in which viewers are engaged will viewing the proposed action is routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work, or recreational or tourism-based activities?
Well, I actually think it's both.
Both.
Because the whole point of the development is tourism-based activities. So there's everybody that travels up and down Route 9, as well as those people coming into Rhinebeck, not just for this resort, but for others in the village as well, in terms of a tourist destination.
Yeah, and that's what I was gonna say, Mel, Route 9 is, is a major travel recreation quarter. Obviously, it's the major quarter. It's not that this is off, you know, on a, on a back grade, so.
I'm saying moderate to large, but you know, with that, I'm saying this can all be mitigated, and that's what we'll get to. But I think we have to acknowledge that there is an impact.
So, so again, just reminding us that compared to the original plan, which was a larger, is it still moderate to large compared to the original plan, I, I guess is, I just, I know we don't have the comparison.
Well, I can, I can go back to the original plan and say both plans have included development around the stone barn. So, which is what I think is the biggest visual impact coming up nine, you can see through there, so. Actually, any development. actually, any development around there, whether the original plan or this one would be visible from the Route nine, at least coming from the south.
Also, it's possible.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to say to Sean's point that it may be that when Jim drills down on a few of these, you may come back and you may shift and, and change something that was identified as a moderate to large impact, maybe shifted to a small impact when, when we understand what the delta is between the previous iteration of the plan and the present plan.
And again, and again, looking back at the plans themselves, right? Cause I don't have the plans up on the screen. There are only so many things we can look at at once while we're doing this. So, you know, once we get back into it, it's, oh yeah, you know, looking at that, this or that may, you know, mitigate that, that element too. Right. There'll be, you know, another, another discussion or two, just to kind of finalize this. Hopefully one. All right. Uh, so we will do moderate for D. Uh, letter E, the proposed action may cause a diminishment of the public enjoyment and appreciation of the designated aesthetic resource.
Potentially moderate to large, I think.
Other comments on that?
Based upon view shed from Route nine?
And no road, yeah. All right. Um, we'll go with that for now. Again, we can come back and revisit that. Uh, are there similar projects within the following distance of the proposed project? Then a half mile, half mile, three miles, three to five or five plus miles. So are there other commercial hospitality lodging type uses, I guess?
Does that include the village?
Well, that's what I was gonna say, certainly within the village, right?
Yeah.
But I think it's, as, as, as a straight out question, the answer is yes. Then the question becomes, how do we answer this question? So there are, so does that mean it's a no or small impact or a moderate to large act? And again, thinking about the prior approval.
I think this is really hard because it's dealing with aesthetics.
Yes.
It, it, it's not really dealing with competition or closeness of similar activities. I, I just, you know, I think the answer is yes, but I don't think it's, I think it's no or small.
I agree.
All right. Any other thoughts on aesthetic resources? This one can be tough. There are a couple of these that can be, be tough to go through and and answer anything else. All right. Getting there. Uh, impact on historic archaeological resources, the proposed action maker in or adjacent to an historic or archaeological resource. Uh, A, the proposed action maker wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any buildings, archaeological site or district, which is listed in the national or state register, uh, been determined by the commissioner of, of Shippo to be eligible for listing on the state register historic places. So E three E. I know we've talked about before. Uh, says, yes, yep, the, and here they do list, uh, the Steenberg Tavern, uh, Grassmere itself, the Hudson River Historic District. The attributes on which the listing is based are the manor house and stone barns, adjacent properties on Mill Road, uh, including listing buildings in the Rhinebeck Cemetery. So the answer is yes. So how do we want to answer this in terms of impact?
I think it's moderate to large, and I think the, um, the mitigations that they have in place, uh, you know, are necessary as far as the treatment of the historic property. Uh, you know, the archaeological investigations they've done, that sort of thing.
I agree.
I agree.
Proposed action maker wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to an area designated as sensitive archaeological sites on the New York State Archaeological Site Inventory, E three F. Um, the answer to that is yes, according to them. So I mean, obviously we've got, I'm not sure what the status of the Steenberg Tavern is. I don't know that one. Uh, and obviously if grassmere itself, it's also some other properties. So do we consider the impact to be significant? Or I'm sorry, moderate to large, significant, moderate to large or small or no impact?
Well, I, I think it's moderate to large. I think mitigation is appropriate and I think they've gone a long way toward that. But I think the impact is potentially moderate to large.
Okay.
And I think what's not on the, what's not on the list that occurs to me is, where the landsman kill comes down through the village and crosses in the bridges there. Um, that's an extraordinarily historic village component. Um, and that's certainly within the designated distance.
So put that in here and say that's moderate as well, I would assume.
Yep.
Some of the discussions, okay? If any of the above are answered, moderate to large impact may occur. Continue with the following questions. Help support conclusions in part three. Proposed action may result in the destruction or alteration of all or part of the site or property. I could go through this document, but I think we all know kind of what's going on our head with the restoration of the manor house and the existing barns and the proposal for the new structures.
I, I, you know, in looking at these last three question, E, you know, I, I think the answer to that for me is no or small impact, but because of the mitigations they've brought forward already.
Yeah. Cause what they're proposing for, uh, like the manor house is not really an alteration. Even though they're reconstructing the porch, they're doing it in kind and it's sympathetic and complimentary to the property.
I think we have to recognize and give them credit for working closely with Shippo. Um, so that everything that they're proposing to advance is within the guidelines. Prepared. I mean, it's, it's important to say there's an impact, but I think they've mitigated the impact by their willingness to work closely with Shippo.
Yep.
Very good. All right. Open space and recreation, proposed action may result in loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of an open space resource that's designated and adopted municipal open space plan. Well, we don't have an adopted open space plan in the town due to the comp plan, but I know open space plan.
Right.
So, um, tell me right into the, sorry, Melody, what was that?
Well, I think that's a no.
For the whole thing? For all of eleven?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I think so.
I, I, I could see that. Anyone else have thoughts on that?
I mean, this, this property's never been open to the public, although there are lots of people who've gone there who shouldn't have gone there, but.
Cause I was gonna say graffiti is a recreational activity.
Well, that and hunting activities, but, um, I, I don't see anything in eleven that would warrant anything other than a no.
No or small impact. Everyone good with that? Sounds like it.
Yep.
All right. Impact on critical environmental areas.
We don't have one.
Was the actual location? We don't have any, correct?
Correct.
That's an easy one. Impact on transportation, proposed action may result in the change, uh, and a change to existing transportation systems. A projected traffic increase may exceed capacity of the existing road network. So when we look at D two J, did earlier today.
Actually, everything here is D two J.
Right. It's not going to give us, um, you know, says the, well, the proposed action results substantial increase in traffic above present levels or generate substantially demand for transportation facilities or services. The answer in part one was no. Um, if you look at this specifically, you know, any question, will projected traffic increase exceed capacity of the existing road network? Uh, given that it's coming out, that well, it's coming out partly on the two lane road, we're partly on the four lane road to state Route nine and the major north south route. Um, we can wait for DOT to chime in on it officially. I don't think they're going to exceed the capacity of the existing road network. Uh, given that it is a major state route, but I would leave that up to everyone here. Um, and I just wrote these real quick and we can go back to them. Uh, we are constructing less than 500 parking spaces now. They did reduce the number of parking spaces. I think we're three hundred and sixty-five, seventy, something like that. Uh, after the most recent reduction. Will the proposed action degrade existing transit access? Uh, there's one bus route that runs from Poughkeepsie up Route nine to Red Hook, comes back down. This will not impede that as far as I can tell, other than obviously we have some returning movements and some additional traffic, but it's not, I don't think would degrade the transit access based on the questions kind of being asked here. Will the proposed action degrade existing pedestrian or bike accommodations? There really aren't any out there right now. And will the, although, although I have to say Route nine is a state bike route, but there isn't an accommodation per se. And will the proposed action alter the present pattern of movement of people or goods? So I just want to put out there those kind of thoughts on a couple of these and I open it up to everyone for your thoughts on nowhere small impact or moderate to large, starting with a will we exceed the capacity of the existing road network?
No. I say no.
Not hearing anything else. Uh, proposed action may result in construction of a park area for 500 or more. We know that's not going to happen. So I figured I could check that one. Um, does everyone agree with my thoughts on transit access or not degrade transit?
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay. Uh, same for bike and pedestrian accommodations. Since there really aren't any out there, you've known as a bike route.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. And will it alter the present pattern of movement of people or goods?
No.
All right. So we will check no on that. Any other thoughts on transportation? All right. Impact on energy, uh, the proposed action may cause an increase in use of any form of energy. Well, generally speaking, the answer to that is yes, because reporting some new buildings on the site. Let's go through this one by one. Posted action will require a new or an upgrade to an existing substation, D two K. I believe the answer to that was no. Let me just double check. D two. Well, okay. So the D two K says, will the proposed action for commercial industrial projects generate newer additional demand for energy? The answer is yes. Estimate the annual electrical demand during operation of the action. That is still pending. Anticipation sources or suppliers for electricity is the grid and will it require a newer upgrade to an existing substation? The answer to that is no. So I think it's no for the first one. Um, proposed actual creation. So the second one is asking about, you know, will it require the creation or extension of an energy transmission or supply system that's or fifty or more? Uh, single family to family residences or serve a commercial or industrial use? The answer is yes. How would you like to? Answer this one in terms of impact.
Is it really going to impact anyone outside of the development?
Well, it shouldn't.
I don't think so.
And it's not fifty single units beyond what was originally proposed, correct?
Correct. It is less units than the original submission.
So then I think the answer is clear now.
Okay. Um, let her see, we don't have a number, a specific number, at least in here. So I think I'll just have to get that and bring that back to you. If that works for you.
Yep.
Was actually involve heating and cooling more than a hundred thousand square feet of building area when completed. This one I do believe they have in here. So this is G. Think it was under a hundred. D one G, it is going to be eighty-eight thousand thirty-six square feet of heated and cooled space.
Okay, so it's no.
Under a hundred. So we can answer that. No.
May I just ask, Jim, may I just ask one question going back to the impact on transportation? I'm thinking about parking in the village and people are going to want to try the other restaurants and it's night and they may not want to walk. Um, I just see potential impacts on parking in the village.
I could add that under here as a other impact and see where we go with that if you'd like.
Okay.
Well, let me.
They're gonna have a shuttle of some sort.
I believe that was the idea.
We have talked about it. I don't know that it's, um, confirmed. It's a question we can follow up on.
And if it's less people than what was originally proposed, is it less than or a small impact?
It could be. That would be up for discussion amongst the board. Again, it's a group decision.
Were you talking about parking in the village?
Yeah, I think.
I'm talking about it's less people and, uh, and so, so it would be a smaller impact. If there's less proposed units in a smaller project than what was originally approved, and that's what we're discussing tonight.
No, I, I think we need to look at it as to whether or not it's a moderate or large impact or small or no impact, because it could have been a, a, a large impact before. And even though they've scaled it down, it still might not meet the criteria of a small impact. So just because it's smaller than what was there before, doesn't mean that it's automatically in the no column.
And there are more phases coming.
Well, yeah, we're only looking at this one right now, though.
And also I'd point out that the restaurant use, uh, I don't know how that relates to the amount of restaurant use that was proposed in the last version of the project, but you can, you could have less guest rooms and, but more, uh, public restaurant space.
Well, you, you, you do. Um, this is significantly smaller in terms of restaurant or eating facilities on the property. And that could mean one of several things. It could mean that there, the fact that there are fewer in this application drive more people to go into the village to eat since there are less options on the property. So, you know, what seems like a diminishment might also be an increase in impact on the village because there's less offerings in this new application than there were in previous application. So there's less reasons to stay on site with this application than there were in the previous application. I know it sounds a little convoluted, but.
No, no, you're absolutely right, Melly. That's what I was gonna say that it's, it's a different, in this case, it's a different kind of thing. It's a different assessment. It's, you know, as you say, less is may result more, you know, less restaurants may result in more trips. Um, one thing I want to look into and I'll talk with John about is, you know, it's an offsite impact and it's in the village. It's not in the town. I know we always consider the village and everything that gets done, but I do want to look at the fact that this crosses municipal borders and just think about that a little as well. Uh, but I think.
The village is in the town.
Yes.
And, and I, a town resident, go to the village all the time and need parking.
Yep. Yeah. Okay.
I, I do think though, that compared to some other projects, given the volume of amenities, doesn't mean there's no impact. I'm not suggesting that, but the volume of amenities do keep a lot of people on site. So.
Theoretically.
And, and when you look at their other projects, just from like talking to people in the distance and other locations near these projects, they've suggested that several times. Obviously there's people that are going to visit the village because it's a very special place. But I, I do think it's less than probably what the previous application looks like.
I don't think we can know that.
I'll, I'll see what I can pull out of the last one versus this one, but I think that one again is, it's just going to be a decision the planning board is going to have to make in terms of, uh, no or small impact or moderate. Um, again, I do think there was a shuttle. I know it was to the train station. I don't remember if it was going to the village, but we'll, we'll pull some detail on that. I'll get that for you. Are you anything else back on transportation?
Nope.
All right, moving on. Energy. I think we answered that one. Unless anyone has any other thoughts on energy?
Nope.
Moving on. Noise, odor and light. The proposed action may result in increasing noise, odor or outdoor lighting. Proposed action may produce sound above noise level established by local regulation. D two M. We have. Uh, the applicants. The applicant said, so the question states, will the proposed action produce noise that will exceed existing ambient noise levels during construction operation or both? The answer is yes. The details of that are that there will be typical construction noises. Will the proposed action remove existing natural barriers that could act as a noise barrier or screen? The answer is no. So the answer we have right now is it'll be typical noise construction.
Is this only during construction?
Well, this is asking about noise levels established by local regulation and I think the answer is that the based on what's written here, I think their answer is that yes, there will be noises exceeding ambient noise levels. It says during construction operation or both. Their answer is typical construction noises. So I think the the assumption or is what they intended to say is yes, during construction, but they don't believe so during operation.
So that the assumption there is if they're having a huge wedding at the event center, there's no noise?
Well, that could certainly be something we can discuss. Absolutely. But it, but is it above the local regulation? I know, Michael, you have some experience in the decibel level areas. I don't know if it goes as far as events. Things like that or.
Well, there, there's still the, the noise regulations do apply irregardless of, of the function. Just building and things like that. They have certain exemptions in the law because it recognizes the necessary noise, but it's not a permanent part of what's going to happen on the property. So there are exemptions for things along those lines, but not for events, which would actually be part of the commercial function that they're doing. And therefore those reg, those events would have to, you know, come under noise, noise regulations. And one of the things we usually would discuss is amplified noise, be it inside or outside buildings. If it's inside, that's one thing. If it's outside, then it becomes an issue and you do have to regulate, you know, the, the level of noise that's generated by outdoor amplified, you know, music, public address systems, things like that.
Absolutely.
So there's certainly the potential for a small impact.
Yeah, oh, definitely.
Would you say, Michael, it was a moderate to large impact potentially?
Not necessarily given the size. It seems like most of the activities they're planning are indoors inside the buildings on the property, except for the pool outdoors and the barbecue area, but that doesn't seem like that's going to be such an event center. It's more or less just for different amenities for the people staying there, just to go and hang out around the pool or, you know, get a snack or something like that.
And that's assuming that the weddings are mostly inside as well.
Correct.
Okay.
But I think, I, I think if you're going to rely on those things, those, those, that's all good. But I think we have to remember when the time comes to write the conditions on the approval that any assumptions like that that are built in have to be indicated in the approval.
Absolutely.
Because otherwise, well, we originally didn't plan to do things outside, but then we changed our plan, you know.
I think the special use permit requires them to discuss exactly what sort of amplified noise, public address systems, things like that they're going to use.
Yep.
And that, so that's something we do have to look into and we do have to, you know, have those conditions of any approval that we have looked at and then we have set limits.
Yeah, I don't know how much events were discussed in the original iteration of the project, but that's probably one of the bigger impacts.
They, they also need to be cognizant of the fact that a lot of the people staying here are not going to want a lot of noise at night. I mean, they're paying good money to stay at a place and they're not going to want to be kept up at night. So in their own self-interest.
You know, it, it depends though, Michael, too, because I, I've been at a few places. I've stayed at some places where I thought that would be the case. And it turned out that like I was the only person there that wasn't part of the wedding party and every, they rented out the whole rest of the place and nobody cared about it being quiet until they were ready to retire. So.
Well, that could certainly happen. That's true.
So the question is, is it no or small or moderate to large?
It seems potentially moderate to large.
I would agree.
I have a question. Will we be wrapped up in three minutes and 41, 40, 39 seconds? I have a security update that's going to push on me in about that amount of time, so I.
Unfortunately, no.
Craig, if you have to leave, we'll understand.
Okay, it takes a while sometimes for these to load and I'll try to get on with my phone. So Jim, if you could just watch for me, I'll try to get back in.
Yep, as soon as you come back in, I'll.
Four, five minutes. Okay, thank you. Sorry, everyone.
No problem.
Thanks, Jim. Is it worth requesting just more information about what kind of events they plan on having? To answer that question more appropriately?
Well, that's why we'll, that's why we'll circle back to that. I think Jim will follow up on that.
Okay, I mean, the other ones when we're circling back, we just didn't mark it as anything, so.
I'm marking it down.
For my question. Got it.
I'm marking it down on here on paper. So I'm writing and working.
Can I just ask one question as a form of comparison? When the Science Foundation does their event there, is there like, does that like meet the noise orderances in, in place, like just as a comparison?
Don't know.
I haven't got a word of any complaints.
Yeah, that's really the only way you know if it's kind of too loud unless you sit out there with a measurement tool. It's, if someone complains and then you start looking into it.
But I'm not sure the Science Foundation is equivalent to a large 250 person wedding.
No, but probably have 200 people and music till 10:30. I mean, it's not the same, but right now the Stone Barns are all open, so there's definitely noise carry.
That's true.
You know, and, and it's.
Depends on whether, depends on whether they move to outside weddings or not.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get some more detail and I'll see what I can find on that. We'll ask for some more detail.
And we can talk about mitigation on this. I know, you know, events are an issue up and down the valley. And in a lot of municipalities, they're requiring that the music, amplified music stay all indoors. And so there are things that can be done to mitigation measures that can be taken to really make inroads on this, but it's a good idea to highlight it for, as an issue to be looked at further in part three.
Yep. Okay, well, the proposed action result in blasting in the 1,500 feet of a residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center or nursing home. The answers in here would indicate no, although it's not specific to blasting, but I don't recall any discussion of blasting at all. On the site. Okay.
I don't know if they blast.
Yeah.
Well, if there's no blasting, the answer is no.
Right.
If there is blasting, it is certainly within, I would, well, I don't know, what's the hundred, how many feet to the Astro home?
There'd be blasting in that terrain with very few Rocco crops.
No, I, I'm, I'm saying if there's no blasting, the question clearly is no. But if there is, I was just questioning how close they are to the Astro home.
I think it's, I mean, given where the activity is proposed to take place, I think it's, it should be quite a bit more than 1,500 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's maybe a third of a mile or so. I think it's, it's more than that, but.
Okay.
We'll, we'll look into the. From the top of the property, you're probably right. Where the activity is taking place, I don't think it would come within that distance.
Okay.
All right. Proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour per day.
You've got those barbecues going.
The answer in the, in the paperwork is no. And I guess the thought about that, you know, is if, even if they do have the barbecue's going, I don't know, would it, would it go offsite? To impact anyone other than the project itself?
Think so.
You do or don't think so, Melody?
I don't think so.
You don't think so? Okay, yeah, I would agree. I think I'd agree with that. Um, let's see. Next, proposed action may result in light shining onto adjacent properties. D2N, we're getting there. Just done, see. The answer in here is no. There will be outdoor lighting, parking lot lighting, pedestrian lighting and minor dwelling lighting. Will the proposed action remove existing natural barriers that could act as light barrier or screen? The answer is no.
I'm not sure that's entirely true. I think it's, I think it's perhaps small, but certainly the people living in the Steenberg Tavern may result in seeing lights from the property.
Yeah, you'll, you'll definitely see them. I mean, the word shining is a little difficult. Maybe, I don't know, John, if you dealt with this one before, but for me, shining is more like glare versus light, you know, seeing them. You could certainly see them from, you know, you can see lights from quite a distance.
I, I, I would say if everything is operational down in the barn area at night and there's a lot of activity and events and barbecuing, there would have to be a glow in the sky and I don't know that that's light shining. But and it may be very low impact, but I think there will be light coming off the property in some way or form.
Yeah, and also shining can also be, you know, automobile or vehicle lights too.
That's true.
You know, if they're shining onto other properties.
So for example, if there was a wedding and 200 people were leaving over a short period of time, there might be headlights coming out into adjoining property. I'm just talking out loud here about.
Yeah.
Um.
On, on the southern end, it would be into that commercial use. At the northern end of the staff parking on the bend, is it residential across? Is it residential across or is it undeveloped? I can't picture it in my head.
Well, it's residential across from that. Well, it's residential. It's certainly residential across from the southern entrance as well. There's houses down there. Well, I think the answer is yes, it may be small impact, but I think there is an impact.
Yeah, and here, here, here's what the workbook says, Melody, about those. It says that a small impact might occur if a limited number of lighting fixtures are planned for parking and safety lighting, but all fixtures will be fully shielded, downward directed and no glare or light spillage on adjacent properties or roadways will result. No signs, accessory structures or buildings will be illuminated. So that's the example of a small impact. Moderate to large impact could occur under one or more of the following circumstances. Lighting will be provided for large recreation facilities or arenas. Lighting will remain illuminated all night. Lighting will be created in a rural area where there is currently dark skies and little sky glow. There are no natural barriers to no natural barriers present to screen lighting effects and the project site is visible from adjacent land uses and visibility of drivers on adjacent or nearby roads and streets may be impaired.
Well, it's hard to argue that it wouldn't be martyr, moderate to large in that case. In my opinion.
It's certainly an area that's pretty, probably pretty dark right now.
Oh, it's very dark right now. I mean, I think there's mitigation, but I get.
Yeah, and, and we also have to drill down to see, again, we're going at the difference. But it's worth, it may be worthy of further inquiry.
Well, I'm not sure that I know and it may be that I just missed it, whether or not the parking lot in the south is illuminated or not.
It is.
It is. So, so anyone leaving after an event or a large scale gathering at night would be going into a parking lot that had lights on it. Right?
Yeah. Yep.
So I, I would think that would and maybe that's part E rather than D, but it does sort of argue that there could be a sky glow.
I was actually arguing the, the opposite, that it's actually D and not E. I mean, you've got the village there and we are talking about all the lighting has to be compliant with the town code for down lighting and cutoff lighting. The sky glow should be, should be non-existent in theory. But.
It sounds to me like we need more information on both of those.
Yeah, I'll look into it a little more.
Yeah, I was trying to find lighting in the technical memo and I found noise, but not lighting.
I think one of the biggest impacts would be Melody's thought of a whole bunch of cars pretty much leaving at one time, coming out, shining their headlights on that house right across the street.
John and Jim, just for clarification, and I'm not trying to continue to bring this up, but if something was previously approved for potentially more people and we're comparing more people to the potential for less people based upon the combinations. Is that essentially what we're comparing this to? Are we comparing it to? Are we just comparing it to what's possible with the current proposal?
Well, I think.
Comparing it. Go ahead, Melody, sorry.
Well, my point was that in both applications, there was the expectation that there would be restaurant-based events at the Stone Barn. So that, although you're correct, Sean, that the number of rooms available in the Echo cottages, if you will, that has dramatically reduced, but the expectation that there would be weddings and other catered events at the Stone Barn has not really changed. At least in my, my remembrance of what's going on.
Yeah, I would say that, Sean, that you're right in, in terms of the concept that you, you're that you're talking about, but I think the number of people, what Melody's saying, and I agree with it, that the number of people, the number of units is only one metric. What we're really making a more macro comparison to the, all elements of the plan that were studied in the GEIS versus all elements of the plan that are being presented now.
Okay.
I hope that makes.
Yeah, it, it does. I'm just trying to, trying to keep them separate and trying to keep my brain aligned. So, thank you.
Yep. It's understood. Some, some of them are a little more straightforward than others, sure. Some of them are a little trickier. So I think we're looking at, at least initially, you know, moderate to large impact for light shining onto joining properties. We'll look into the, the headlight discussion. What about the idea of, of, sorry, I lost my, my sky glow?
I'm not sure I know what that means.
It's the, it's the glow you see in the sky. If you're on a dark area and you see kind of that halo up in the sky, if you're on a very rural area, you can tell where the villages, the cities are. Things like that.
Just cross the bridge at night and look over Kingston.
Yeah.
Well, and I'm, I mean, I don't know how to measure it, but I'm trying to imagine driving up Route 9 at night and the Stone Barn having all sorts of wonderful activities going on, the barbecue pit, a wedding, the parking lot that's lit up for people exiting. Do, I mean, I don't know how you determine whether that creates sky glow or not.
Well, my understanding of it is that a lot of it has to do with how much of the lighting is actually exposed.
Okay.
So if you were to compare, you can drive, for instance, you can drive by a parking lot that's lighted, that has all full cutoff fixtures that are pointing, all the light gets pointed down versus driving by a soccer field that has a set of lights around it that are exposed and throw much more of a kind of a circular, you know, the light is spread out above and to the sides as well as down. So.
The, the, the lighting in town is, is supposed to be dark sky compliant, which would in effect make this. The the lighting in town is supposed to be dark sky compliant, which would in effect make this should it should in theory make this. A no impact that, you know, if we do have dark sky compliant lighting, cutoff lighting, it's all down lighting, there should never be. Sky glow now, you know, that means the ground is absorbing it all. I don't have any kind of bounce back or reflection and. If it rains, it's going to reflect more than if it's dry, stuff like that. But in general, it should be no. Impact. We should not have sky glow in any of our developments in the town of Ryanback, in theory.
And and I would I would presume that the applicants don't in this case don't want that either, you know, I think that the atmosphere that they're trying to create. Is not, you know, is the opposite of that. So.
And are they going to have events that involve event lighting? And you know, do we have anything to say to that?
If it's temporary, no. So if like, you know, someone puts up holiday lights, things like that, we don't really regulate those per se. So if they put up lights that are string lights or something, it. Those aren't unless might be correct if I'm wrong, those aren't really regulated. It's more than what we'd consider the permanent lighting. But I do think there are, there can be exceptions to that probably, especially with commercial uses. But I don't know, Michael, if you have other thoughts, you know, the code better than anybody.
It tends to, as you say, for events like Christmas lights, things like that, they're exempted, although you do get neighbors complaining anyway. But for commercial, if part of their design, part of their, the way they've tried to develop sort of a the atmosphere they're creating. They're depending upon light for that, different types of ornamental lights as opposed to for safety and things like that. And that would be something that would certainly come under regulation and something that we would want to see, you know, very specifically pointed out in their lighting plan. If they're going to be doing anything like that, and even if it's becoming a recurring. Thing they're going to do when events come up, then that would certainly be something we would regulate and would have to meet. As you say, our cutoff lighting, you know, light trespass at the property line, for example.
And this is this discussion is bringing home to me that I think one of the things we really want to drill down on with the applicant and make sure that we have a good understanding. As you know, that you do as a board is the whole issue of events because. You had a you have a different applicant now and who has their own vision for how the site's going to be operated. So I think we really want to understand what they're the details of what they have in mind with regard to events, because. That's a big impact for both light and noise.
We don't want their lighting to have to compete with the lights over at the Ball Diamonds on the town field. If you're very bright.
They'd lose.
So I think I think I'd go with no impact for the the sky glow, assuming that that we're looking at, I put a note down here, kind of the permanent lighting, but we will look into ornamental lighting, event lighting. Is a consideration kind of as an other topic. And those may get combined back together. Why don't we go with that for now?
Just make a note for yourself, Jim, I may have missed it, but I didn't see lighting in the technical memo, so. We'll have to see what it's assuming that the lighting was addressed in the GEIS. I just want to make sure we don't miss that.
Right, sixteen, impact on human health. Proposed location within fifteen hundred feet of a school, hospital, licensed daycare center, group home, nursing home or retirement community. I think that is a question Melody asked before. I'll get more info. I think we're okay on that based on where the project is located, not necessarily the end of the parcel. But I will double check A for everyone and I'll fill that one. We'll let you know to fill that one out. Be the site of the proposed actions currently undergoing remediation. Don't believe that's the case. Double check. No. Not seeing anything that would suggest that. And I don't think we've heard anything about that, so maybe no or small impact.
Right.
Okay. Completed emergency spill remediation or completed environmental site remediation on or adjacent to site of the proposed action. I don't believe so.
No.
Subtle to institutional control limiting the use of the property easement or deed restriction. Now, there is.
Yes.
The existing deed restriction. I believe it's going to follow the new property line though, right? So it won't actually be on this property. Assuming subdivision goes through, it would be on the other one. John?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think the kind of institutional control that they're referring to here is. The kind of what happens is, for instance, if if property's been contaminated and it's mostly remediated. Sometimes DEC will say this property can't be used for a school or a. The daycare, you know, childcare center or something like that, because they don't want potential exposure. So.
You're right, I just went to.
Easement or deed restriction, I think in that context.
I know, I think you're right. I'm sorry, I just kind of went right down the deed restriction this item. You're right, this is related to human health. So you're absolutely right. Thank you for catching me on that. So I think the answer to this would be no. Proposed action may affect institutional control measures put in place to ensure the site remains protective of the environment and human health.
No.
I don't think there'll be anything there. Proposed action has added control measures in place to ensure the future generation treatment or disposal of hazardous waste will be protected with the environment and human health. I don't think they have any. Double check. So the question is, will the proposed action at the site involve the commercial generation treatment, storage or disposal of hazardous waste? The answer is no. Proposed action involves construction or modification of a solid waste management facility. No, that's the case. Was actual may result in the unearthing of solid or hazardous waste. I don't believe based on the history of the process, project, we would find that. Proposed action may result in increase in the rate of disposal or processing of solid waste. The answer to that is obviously yes. There's nothing going on in the site now. So the question would be, is it? Small impact or large impact? The impact, I think, would just be. Trash trucks coming onto the site, right? Whatever frequency they'll be doing that. Want to have thoughts on how you'd like to answer that?
And the workbook is says, says the following about this, some proposed projects may create solid wastes. That need to be disposed of or processed. The reviewing agency should evaluate if there is existing capacity. To dispose of or process these solid wastes, and if not, will there be a need to? For an expansion or creation of solid waste facilities. More solid waste may mean more facilities are needed. I doubt the scale of waste to be. Produced by this project would fall into that category of create, you know. Creating need for new solid waste facilities.
No, and it looks like they're based on what's in here. You know, they're going to collect, they're going to have recycling center for materials collected through the site and managed at the back house building. All of the construction operation materials will go to a local licensed solid waste facility, I would assume through a private hauler. Doesn't say that, but that would be my guess, assuming that I can do it themselves. And that private hauler would obviously have the capacity to handle that. So I know we're small impact maker. All right. Proposed action may result in excavation or other disturbance within two thousand feet of a site used for the disposal of solid or hazardous waste.
No.
Thank you. Was actually a result in the migration of explosive gases from a landfill site to adjacent offsite structures. That's a no?
No.
No. Posed action may result in the release of contaminated leachate from the project site. Don't believe we have any issues like that. Any other thoughts on our human health? I'll just double check A to make sure we're outside the fifteen hundred feet. I think we are, and then that one should be fine. Should we know our small impact? Almost there, last page. Here we go. Consistency with community plans proposed action is not consistent with. Adopted land use plans. Hey. Most actions land use components may be different from or show contrast to current surrounding land use patterns. We're talking about a. I'm forgetting what it is now. It is a. Country into. Country into use. Any thoughts on? This.
Well, it's going to be pretty different from the surrounding residential area.
It ain't Southlands.
I would I would say that it's. It is very different. I mean, right now it's an agricultural use. It's residential. I'm not saying that it's not a good plan, but I don't think you can say that it's the same as.
Jim, are we comparing it to country and two like? Or are we comparing it to what's around it? Well, this one doesn't really. Yeah, this one wouldn't compare to the old one, right? Because this is just talking about contrasting the current surrounding land use pattern. So really, I don't think. Goes back to the other one. That's where again, it some of these do, some don't. I think this one is just, what do you think of it in context? This is adopted land use plans. Is that in reference to country and two? Is that in reference to what's allowed? I guess is my question. That that's so that's the general comment under consistency with community plans, but specifically the first question here, and we'll get into that, you know, system of county plans or the regional land use plans. Right now, we're building our way, we're building our way into it. Right now, we're just, they're asking. Is it similar or different than the land use pattern that's there? It's actually not asking about a plan at the moment. We'll get there.
So is is the operative word current?
Yes. Yeah, and I think this one is. I think this one stands on its own.
Right.
Sorry, Melody, go ahead.
Well, it's hard to argue that it isn't different from the current surrounding land use patterns. Not that it's allowed or not allowed, but that it is different.
Yep. I I think that's the first statement. So the question is, is that a is there going to be no or small impact or moderate to large impact? And even if there is, it is necessarily a problem to get it permitted by zoning.
Hey, I could that the workbook is helpful on this, I think.
All right, thanks, John.
So for this question, it says a small impact could occur if. The proposed project is not consistent with surrounding land use patterns. But the community has specifically zoned the area for those new uses and the project is consistent with those community laws and goals. Which I think is the case here.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Okay. Letter B, the proposed actual cost permanent population to grow by more than five percent. This is not a residential development, so the answer is no. Is it inconsistent with local land use plans or zoning regulations? This is what you were asking about, Sean. The answer to that is no. It is consistent with the, in my opinion, it's consistent with the plans. Does everyone agree?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Proposed action inconsistent with county plans or other regional land use plans. I don't believe so.
No.
Okay. Proposed action may cause a change in the density of development that is not supported by existing infrastructure or is distant from existing infrastructure.
No.
Proposed action is located in Eric area characterized by low density development that will require new or expanded public infrastructure.
Well, they're making the corrections to the infrastructure themselves, so in terms of water, for example.
And I don't, it's not new, and I don't know, Johnny, correct me if I'm wrong, if when they say expanded, I, you know, in terms of seeker, I usually look at that as that we're expanding it out to new areas. It's going to create new growth. You know, and development, things like that. The fact that they're widening that pipe could be considered. That but widening that pipe is only really to provide service for what they're going to need on site. It's not going to provide additional access that would allow for additional development. Further out, and I think it would be prohibitively expensive for someone to hook up. Much further down the road, for instance, that's where the pipe is. So.
Well, I I I think that. Um. It is requiring newer expanded infrastructure, but I think the impact is small.
Correct. Yep.
Yeah.
And then where my kind of comment comes in actually is here in G, you know, will the proposed action induce secondary development impacts residential commercial development not included in the proposed action?
No.
I don't.
I think not.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts on? This one? We're all set?
No.
All right, we will check off the big box on that one.
Yeah, we may, Jim, sorry, I'm just looking, catching up with us, but. The workbook says that extension or creation of sewer or water lines, so extension or creation of. Sewer water lines, but it doesn't say expansion. Creating new. Creating new public infrastructure districts and construction of new roads would all be considered. Moderate to large impacts, especially if that infrastructure. Allows additional growth to occur. I think I think that last part is what the key is. I don't think this changes what we were saying, but I just wanted to make you aware of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah.
All right, our final comment, question box of the night. Proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character. I always save the fun one for last. All right. So proposed action may replace or eliminate existing facility, structures or areas of historic importance to the community.
No.
The proposed action may create a demand for additional community services.
No. No.
No.
Proposed action may displace affordable or low income housing in an area where there is a shortage of such such housing.
No.
No.
Proposed action may interfere with the use or enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources. I think you already answered that as a no.
No.
Proposed action is inconsistent with the predominant agricultural scale and character. I'm sorry, architectural scale and character.
No.
Proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape.
No, it fits in.
Any other thoughts on consistency of community character? All right. Not hearing anything, we'll go with the big checkbox on this one and. That ends our part two for grassmere. I appreciate everybody spending the time and going through this with us. I do have some questions to go through and get you some information on. May catch up with you too, John. But.
Yep.
Any any questions? Not to keep anyone on the call any longer, but any questions, John, any thoughts or comments?
I I'm just grateful to the board for taking the time after having already gone through partial part of their meeting. Thanks for your conscientiousness. I think this is a really good start on the process.
Well, thank you for your help, John. It's invaluable.
I know, you're welcome. You're welcome. I'm glad we're not doing another EA F part two tonight. I will tell you that.
I don't think we could.
Not before midnight.
We we will reconsider doing two of those in one meeting.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, anything else that anyone wishes to bring before the? Board this evening?
Yeah, I'd like to entertain ending to the meeting.
Well, then you might step forward and offer a motion to adjourn.
I so do.
Could I have a second? Michael, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Thank you. Before I call the vote, thank you, everyone. I know it's been a long and exhausting night, and I do appreciate all the hard work you put in. So with that, may I? Have we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed abstentions. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.